Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Costick. Here. Councilmember Circe. Here. Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Duvalla. Councilmember Obar.
Mayor.
All right. Welcome, everyone. Tonight, we begin our meeting first with a public hearing on the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2019 budget. Our fiscal year begins on July 1st, and in accordance with our city charter, the city manager has prepared a proposed budget for consideration by the city council. The budget was presented last week, and we will spend the next month basically going through the budget. We have work sessions scheduled for the following Mondays, April 16th, April 23rd, and April 30th. The first reading of the budget is scheduled for Wednesday, May 9th, and the second and final reading of the budget is scheduled for Wednesday, May 16th. Tonight, we have a public hearing on the budget. We will have another public hearing on April 25th, it's Wednesday evening as well, and at that same time, we will have a public hearing on the constant yield tax rate. I have two people so far signed up to speak to the budget, so if Mr. Arthur David Olson would come give his comments.
Mayor, while we're waiting, just clarification, too, that on the 25th, the meeting starts at 6:30.
Oh, yes, thank you, right.
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue. Thanks to the efforts of Tyrce, Suzanne Ludlow, and Darrell Braithwaite, I've received a printout of the city's equipment replacement reserve spreadsheet. I hope council members will review this document, or at least review the literal bottom line. That line shows a total of about $780,000 we'd add to the reserve to pay for the eventual replacement of equipment we are now using and wearing out. It's the moral equivalent of the actuarially recommended amount in the pension realm. The proposed budget calls for an addition of only $700,000. I hope the council will add the full $780,000. In a year when our budget highlights young people, I don't want underpayments now to saddle them with undue expense in the future. I also hope the council will ask for additional information on the proposed economic development division. If there's one area where we should be focused on economics, it's economic development. So first, will a division of two, will it be a division of two in the long run, or is future growth and increased cost expected? Second, what increased revenue can the city expect as a result of having the division? And how does that revenue compare with the cost of the division? Third, would a smaller or larger division provide greater net benefit to the city? And finally, how concretely will we measure the effectiveness of the division? Given drivers of development such as the purple line that are in play, measurement will be particularly difficult. How do we differentiate between what the division causes and what would have happened anyway? While the budget sets goals for numbers of contacts made, these seem to be measures of activity rather than measures of success. I hope the council will use particular care in reviewing the economic development division proposal because full-time equivalents are forever, or at least they tend to be. More on other matters to follow in a couple of weeks, but that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Ms. Sarah Sevierly, and I'm probably pronouncing your last name wrong.
I wrote my name by accident.
Oh, okay. Would anyone else like to speak to the FY 2019 budget?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Machuie.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't know I had to sign.
Nope, you don't need to.
Hi, Mary Jane Machuie, Ward 2, Boyd Avenue. I'm speaking for two or three things. I'm speaking about special needs adults like my son, who all this, you know, property tax hike will really adversely affect extremely. I'm also speaking about African Americans who are very adversely affected nationwide because most of their money is in their houses, and the houses are being depreciated, and there's a group, according to my friend here who live in my neighborhood, and are a mixed racial neighborhood, which is becoming more and more upper-middle-class white, and the middle class, whatever, there's left of us are being kicked out. It's like you want all this money for the kids who are in the apartment buildings here, but guess what? Their parents aren't moving here because they can't afford here. But you're spending all this money for the recreation and the new library for these kids who are living here in these apartments, but they're not moving here because they can't afford here. And I really see, and then the people like us who are the property tax is going to be most adversely affected, we don't need the $8 million library, $2 million for plumbing, et cetera, is good enough for most of us. And the same with all the other gentrification projects. It's gentrification. These wealthy people are moving in. I just spoke to a woman two nights ago, and she said, "Well, I wish, if I would never moved to Tacoma Park, the property taxes would be so high, but yet the library is so crummy. I want a big library." Yeah, that's what happens. These wealthier people come in, and they say they want more and more things that cost more and more money, and so us lower-middle-class people get priced out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Machuie. Anyone else like to speak to the FY 2019 budget? Mr. Silverman?
I'd like to speak to the inventory tax, if that's appropriate.
If you could.
You can wait.
Yeah, if you could.
Thank you.
Hi, Roger Sligo, Allegheny Avenue. I just had a quick question. I saw that there's an item for improvement of Tacoma branch, which is in the Pinecrest neighborhood, stream restoration. And at one time, when I talked to Sarah Danes a few years back, she mentioned that that Poplar Mill, Sligo Mill Parkland there, that there is kind of a clause, I don't know the legal term, that says that the strip along New Hampshire Avenue could be open for development at some point. And with our need to find possible sites in the future for affordable housing, I wondered whether the city could investigate that possibility, and if need be, have that influence whether they go forward with the stream restoration project now, or wait and make sure that the design of that wouldn't conflict with any future possible affordable housing development there. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. And these are just public comments right now on our FY 2019 budget. We will be taking other public comments in a moment. So this is our public hearing for the FY 2019 budget.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Dave Villanueva, Holly Avenue, Ward 1. I've lived in the city for 35 years and raised my kids here, and they have often told me how proud they are to be from Tacoma Park. One of the reasons is our social responsibility to ourselves. I recently retired, so now I have more time, even more time, to devote to the city, and one of the committees I joined was the Nuclear Free Zone Committee, because inevitably, over those 35 years, when I mentioned to people outside the area that I live in Tacoma Park, they say, "Oh, the nuclear-free city." And I finally decided, well, what's that all about? So I went to a meeting just a month or so ago, and was surprised to realize that the whole city's budget is really against their own ordinances, because in the 1980s, it was written and adopted by this city that we would be socially responsible and not invest our money in companies that dealt with making nuclear weapons. And in fact, we are in violation of that. No responsibility to the city, it's just the companies and banks that our money was in have been bought up and passed on. And so you're talking about all the money that we have and we want to spend, but in fact, we have our money invested in a bank, SunTrust, which has their money invested in companies that make nuclear weapons, and we want the city to reevaluate its position. And so I just wanted to bring that to the council and to the people that are here in the room.
Thank you. And I will just note that we have been, and we have a work session coming up, and we've been working with a consultant on this.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
So, thank you. All right. Any other public comments regarding our FY 2019 budget?
I really hoped I was going to get the call by name, like the other folks. I guess I haven't quite made it there yet.
Sorry, I took the list away before you got to sign in. Sorry. See, Talisha did it.
I know you.
Good evening, neighbors. I'm here to speak tonight about the playground at the Hillwood Manor Park. I wanted to thank Councilwoman Circe for her involvement in this project, and address two points that have been raised about our request. The first is that we have been told that our park is on the Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning Commission's capital improvement plan for 2022. I don't believe them, right? The entire reason that we asked the city for help is because in 2017, we were told that we were on the list for 2018, and now, here we are in 2018, and we've been told we've been bumped to 2022. The second point is that I've been told that there is limited city staff time to deal with our request. I understand that city staff time is limited. I also understand that it's the people on this stage who decide what the city staff is going to be spending its time on. I also understand that it's the people on this stage who will decide whether the Hillwood Manor Playground is just as important to this city as the dog park, the tot lot on Colby Avenue, or the playground at Sligo Creek Overlook Park. Last week, I spoke alone. Tonight, I brought a neighbor, and you'll continue to hear from Hillwood Manor until our concerns are addressed in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the FY 19 budget?
Good evening, Byrne Kelly, from Ward 3, 6517 Westmoreland Avenue. I was reading the reply to the financing questions that have been asked, and the economic analysis that have been asked about the junction site and NDC. And in reading that, I see that it's front-end loaded for lower, sort of a break to make things happen, and then it goes up and it escalates. And so my question is, if NDC or any other company that we would be working with as a city goes bankrupt or disappears off the face of the earth, do we have a fund, if we established a contingency fund for possibly becoming the owners and landlords of a new development? That's my question.
Thank you.
Can you answer it?
No, not at the moment. This is a public hearing for our FY 19 budget, so any other comments on that? Okay, Susan, yeah, go ahead.
I didn't prepare any comments. Suzanne Lowen, Sycamore Avenue. I didn't prepare any comments, but I did go to the open house and had a good discussion with a few people there, and I heard the presentation last week, and I am concerned about the, is it a 4.5% proposed property tax hike increase? What is the percentage that was proposed last week? But it was a property tax.
It's 1.02 cents out of the.
Per $100 assessed value.
Right. It's right, on the current 53.48 cents, so.
Uh-huh. Anyway.
I'll get the math to you, but it's not that.
Thank you, okay. I have that number wrong, but. And increase in staff of five, and we are so excessively tax burdened as it is in this city. I think our rates are among the highest in the county and in the state of Maryland. So I'm very concerned about that. I think that there are efficiencies that should be sought before we increase the staff, which could be cross-training. I know that Ms. Ludlow talked about a shortage of staff in human resources because of two babies being born at the same time, and so maybe this doesn't work in HR, but possibly in other departments, if there were cross-training so that people from other departments could help cover when there is a shortage of staff. And a desk audit, maybe, to determine if there are other efficiencies that could be achieved, that, you know, until those possibilities are exhausted, I don't think that it is responsible to add additional staff. And I hope that that will be a priority for you, to seek efficiencies and lowering the tax rate in this city, where we are very tax burdened, and we have a population that can, an aging population that can ill afford those taxes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments on our FY 19 budget?
Hi, my name is Joseph Gilde. I live at 48 Jefferson Avenue, and I wanted to comment about the Tacoma Junction project.
Actually, sir, can you, this is the public hearing for.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, if you could just hold that for one second, because we're going to get to public comments in a moment. So this is on our budget. This is the public hearing for the budget.
All right. I'll do my best.
Okay. Thank you. We're almost there. Any other public comments on the budget? Please come forward. So this is just the public hearing on the FY 19 budget right now. Okay.
My name is Jill Sletta. Steve is my husband. So I'm just going to bring up a couple other points about the playground. So I know that in the past couple of years, the city has forwarded money, like they've said that we're going to spend this amount of money, and then they actually get grants for the playgrounds. So that's one option. I work with grants, so I'm happy to help write a grant or whatever. So we're not trying to give you guys problems, we're trying to also give you solutions at the same time. But we really feel like there was an expo, fitness expo this past weekend. Where do you think the kids get their most exercise? At playgrounds. My kids don't go down the street two blocks to that neighborhood because it's not fun. We'll go to PG County Parks, which are theme parks. We'll stay for four or five hours, have a picnic, and come home, but we're traveling for an hour and a half, when we could just simply go down the street and have fun then, but we don't because it's boring, and they're bored within a half an hour. So, you know, please think about adding money to the budget for this year, because I see you guys only have $27,000 for, I guess, if I remember correctly, a basketball refurbishing court, and that's all you have in the funds for parks and playgrounds in this city. Why? All the city's parks can't be in that great a shape. And I'm just, you know, if our children are our future, which we always hear all the time, let's invest in them and in their fitness. And so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comments on the budget?
Hi, I'm Lorraine Pierceall. I wasn't going to say anything, but Suzanne sparked an idea that I wanted to share with you. I'm too worried about increasing our taxes. The older we get, the harder it is, and I'm sure a lot of people are, and so finding efficiencies, I think, is an important thing, and a suggestion for your consideration is instituting a kind of internal timesheet, so you can analyze how staff are allocating their time. The best way to find efficiencies is to understand what the staff are really working on and how long they're working on what projects. Every private sector job I've ever worked in has done this. It's just a good way to keep track of what things really cost you, and what maybe perhaps where time could be better spent. So you could give it a name, it can be a totally internal thing, but I think it could be enormously helpful to you in the long run. I just want to offer that idea.
Thank you, Ms. Pierceall.
Colleen Cordis, Ward 1. I haven't really had a chance to look, I'm sure like many residents, very closely at the budget, because I've been trying to look very closely at the junction situation, and that's a lot to have happening for both the council and the residents at the same time in such a short timeframe. But, so I cannot say I actually endorse the idea I'm going to suggest, because I'm not sure how I really feel about the tax increase. How is it going to affect affordable housing, really, in Tacoma Park? But at least one idea to protect affordable housing might be to have some identified point, perhaps the median point of single-family houses, below which the tax increase would not be applied to, and for people living in apartments, that could be like a single person, it could be a different set point. So for instance, for a family, perhaps it would be $400,000. The first $400,000 of property value, you would not have this new tax increase go into effect. So that means people who are already living in affordable housing would not, and that might be too low, might be too high, but people who already have affordable housing, we would not be imposing taxes on that amount of property, and that would protect the base of at least affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Malcolm Williams. I reside in Ward 6. I'm the current president of the Hillward Manor Association. This is my first time here, so excuse my jitteriness, but I'm just echoing with what Jill was speaking about in regards to the park. For lack of a better word, we just need a better park there. I'm not sure if you guys have had any time to come over there and actually check it out, but my wife and I, we just recently had two kids within the last three years, and we find ourselves using these resources a little more. There's a lot of our neighbors as well, there are a lot of young couples in the neighborhood as well now, as the older population is starting to dwindle away, unfortunately. We're seeing a lot of new families in the neighborhood as well. So we have an old couple in the neighborhood, a very nice couple, the DiLuigi's, I'm not sure if anybody knows them. They've been there for a long time. They told me about the two people, the three people who last lived in my house, and all the great stories that came with that. And one of the things that they mentioned that kind of echoed with me was that this is the most kids they've seen in the neighborhood in the entire time that they've been here. So the park there definitely needs some attention, and I find myself going to like the Badlands out in Bethesda, Rockville area, to get my kids to have some kind of interactive education outside of the house, beyond what our park can offer. And Jill will take her kids to parks in PG County. I think there's a problem with that, a fundamental problem, and I think that it really deserves some attention, and we also have dogs, so we need a dog park as well. That's kind of a lower in the totem pole, but we would ideally like to see something for our children and for the human aspect there. But that's all I have. When I go back, if you guys have any questions for me, shoot me an email. I'd be glad to fill you in on any gaps. That's all I got.
Great. Thank you. Congratulations on the kids.
Thank you.
Any other comments on our FY 19 budget? All right, seeing no other comments, now I'd like to.
It looks like you have one.
Oh.
Howard won't let her out.
I'd like to know where the money that will need to be spent is in the budget for coming into coordination with the directives of the Tacoma Park Nuclear Free Zone Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. I think we'll be discussing that as the council discusses the budget.
Well, we were told on Sunday that there might be $1,500 in there for a consultant, but that was all that.
$15,000? I believe it's $15,000.
Was cited.
It's $15,000.
Because there has been no call for a council session on what the funding priorities and the industries you want to avoid.
We do have it scheduled on, it's on our rolling agenda as a work session on the city website, and I can email you the exact date.
And I think that we should think about also outlawing fossil fuels and be carbon-conscious, and that we should think about outlawing gun manufacturers.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Thank you. All right. Now, seeing no other comments on the budget, I would like to recognize some special guests that we have this evening with us. These are Montgomery College students who live in Tacoma Park and who have received scholarships from the city for the last couple of years. At the urging of our colleague, Councilmember Smith, we have allocated $5,000 in our budget to go to students. And tonight, we have with us Larissa Ketcha, Karina Riviera, Abel Altai, Kibran Tevra, Celestine Natom, and if you guys would just like to stand up, because I'd love to give you an applause. And we want to thank you so much for coming this evening. We had a reception earlier and got to hear from the students who are studying things from pre-med, comp sci, and general studies, and history. And I encourage everyone to, you know, get a chance to say hi if you have, and we just thank you again for coming, and we understand if you don't stay for the rest of the meeting. So thank you again for coming. Thank you. And before we move on to more public comment and other things, I just, the other thing we have tonight to recognize is something we were going to do a few weeks ago, but we got snowed out. During the summer of 2017, the city hosted a Safegrow garden photo contest to promote Tacoma Park's Safegrow ordinance and to encourage residents to show off their gardens. Individuals could email their submissions directly to us or share their photos online using the hashtag #SafegrowTacoma. We received about 30 entries, which were narrowed down to 15 finalists, and then the 15 finalists were voted on by residents, and the top three were chosen. And I believe we have some of the winners here, and we'd like to ask them to come up. Our third-place winner was Barbara Mulbacher. Our second place, yep, there's Barbara. Our second-place winner was Jonathan Kang. And our first-place winner is Elizabeth Carter. And you can see the beautiful photographs. So thank you, everyone, for taking part in the photo contest. And we're doing it again in 2018, and so this is a time, hopefully, spring will actually show up here soon, and the weather will cooperate, and as you're doing your gardens, please consider submitting a photo for the contest. There's more information about the photo contest on the city website and our social media accounts. So thank you for everyone who participated, and congratulations again to our winners. All right, getting back to business. There are no other changes, there are no changes to our agenda this evening. Upcoming city council agenda, we have Monday night, as I mentioned, is a city council budget at work session. On the Monday night session, we will be looking at council priorities and our budget. On Wednesday, April 18th, we will have a public hearing on traffic calming on Fifth Avenue between Orchard Avenue and Eastern Avenue. Our voting session on April 18th is tentatively scheduled, depending on our conversation tonight, a first-reading ordinance exempting 100% of inventory from the business personal property tax, and tentatively a resolution providing for appointments to committees. Our work sessions on April 18th will be a discussion of draft housing and economic development strategic plan recommendations, and a discussion of the Tacoma Junction site plan, specifically looking at public space and sustainability features. plan specifically looking at public space and sustainability features. On Sunday, April 22nd, we will have a pop-up at Tacoma Junction from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM so people can get a sense of what the current plan looks like, the dimensions of it. And then on Monday, April 23rd, we have another city council budget work session. This one will focus on capital projects. On Wednesday, April 25th, this city council meeting will begin at 6:30. Begins at 6:30. We begin with a public hearing on the constant yield tax rate and our FY 2019 budget. It begins at 6:30 and we will be having time for childcare as well that evening. Our voting session will include a second reading ordinance, tentatively a second reading ordinance exempting 100% of inventory from the business personal property tax, and our work session that night is on Tacoma Junction site plan, on traffic and circulation. And then on Monday, April 30th, the city council budget work session will be on overview of departmental and non-departmental budgets and budget reconciliation, and that will take us to the end of April. And so, don't forget, Wednesday, April 25th, we begin at 6:30. And now, do we have a representative from our youth council? Oh, there's Althea, Ms. Davies, to give us an update on the youth council.
Hello, I am Althea Davey and I am a representative from our Tacoma Park Youth Council. We met this past Monday for our first meeting in April, and actually, that is one of the most exciting things I have to bring to us. We are confirmed to be, starting in April, we're going to be meeting twice a month instead of once a month. We're going, our next meeting is on April 23rd. And also on April 23rd is the Blair Climate Summit, which is a climate advocacy convention during the school day, a field trip from Blair organized at the Silver Springs Civic Center that the youth council is involved with, helping out, just like we're going to all be there, I believe. And so, then also at the meeting, we went over, we went over the beginnings of a work on a new newsletter that we're going to be sending out to youth in Tacoma Park, the people who signed up for our, who gave us their emails on our survey. We're going to be sending out this newsletter and we're going to hope to get more emails as we go along and get more outreach with this. And also this Saturday is the Love Tacoma event organized by a racial equity committee of the Love Tacoma. And so, we're going to be there with some materials to help reach, have our organization be better known in the community so people can know that we're there as a resource for youth from everywhere in our community. And hopefully, we can get some more emails there as well for our newsletter. And so, we also had a preliminary discussion of a youth town hall meeting that we would probably, might be having, this will be probably in the fall, tentatively sometime in the fall, getting, letting youth get more involved with our local government. So, that is all I have for tonight. Our next meeting is on April 23rd and I'll see you then, I mean, hopefully. I mean, I'll see you next week, but...
Ms. Davies, I just have a question for you. Were you all planning on also doing another volunteer activity this Saturday, or did that get pushed? There was some painting of stairs or?
I think that was, that's on April 21st, so...
Okay, that's the 21st. Thank you. Thank you very much. Perfect.
That's mostly future questions. I'm curious who are the...
Got it. Thank you for that update. All right, now we will have public comments on voting items. Our one voting item this evening is a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for a resident survey. Any comments on our voting item, on the contract for a resident survey? No? All right, now we will move on to public comments on anything you want. So, just come up to the mic, you get three minutes, anything you want.
Anything. Yeah, I really agree. Thank you.
My name is Susan Schreiber and I live in Ward One. My comments address the process for council review and voting on NDC's new design for development at Tacoma Junction. Even at this late stage, there are too many unanswered questions and too many details yet to be fleshed out to proceed to a vote in May. The developer, or rather its partner, Street Sense, presented the new plan just one week ago, five months after the council directed NDC to return to the drawing board to create a final site plan complying with 11 resolutions set out by the council. The primary element of last week's presentation was an attractive rendering of the facade of the building, set along a spacious streetscape populated only by a few cars and pedestrians, a far cry from the reality we experience every day driving, walking, or cycling to, through, and from the junction. In fact, the street view depictions say not to scale, a colossal understatement, nor did the plan include dimensions for the building itself. In addition to the daily traffic and a misplaced crosswalk, the drawing failed to include the bus stop, bike share, and utility pool. Where will these things go? And then there's the elevator to the parking lot situated at the far end from the co-op, the business with the greatest need for easy access for loading heavy bags into cars. Are shoppers carrying grocery bags really supposed to use the stairs nearest the co-op or push full carts the length of the new building on the sidewalk? What about elderly shoppers or people with disabilities? Does this meet any definition of reasonable accommodation, or am I missing something? I hope to learn more at Sunday's open house, but found that project staff from Street Sense had no answers to these and other basic questions. Attendees were encouraged to use computers to record their views, but they didn't have the information to make fully informed comments. Finally, the council should not vote until the state highway administration has completed its much-needed review of the two traffic studies, a 21-day process. Last Thursday, 100 people showed up at the firehouse for a meeting focused on traffic and safety at the junction with the SHA administrator. I'll leave to others or to another time to describe this compelling testimony provided by drivers, pedestrians, cyclists, parents of children crossing the junction, and our fire chief. We must have SHA's review well in hand before the council votes. No amount of discussion by the council over these next three weeks is going to be meaningful until we have a complete site plan that includes all of the details and SHA's assessment. Too much is at stake to take a ready, shoot, aim approach to this project. Thank you.
I'm Roger Schlegel, 6512 Allegheny Avenue. I served as co-secretary of the Junction Task Force. I've already submitted comments about how NDC's site plan responds to the October 25th resolution. I'm going to focus on some bigger picture thoughts. It's been four years since this process started to explore whether private sector development of our public land could meet our community's needs. Much has changed in that time, and these changes lead me to suggest three big questions for you to focus on. First, we have to ask how this proposed development functions within the context of the whole junction. Without getting into the many specific concerns of residents and businesses, consider the basic fact that this development would happen on a block with a very unusual crisscrossing of state highways, a legacy from when East-West Highway was stitched together in the 1930s. Since 2014, we've made all possible traffic and safety fixes short of reconfiguring streets, and we still encounter frustration and danger even without any new construction. The nature of this weird block may impose an upper limit on how intensively the city property can be developed, so please think holistically about functionality, comfort, and safety. Second, we have to imagine how the proposed development will harmonize in five or 10 years with redevelopment around the city. Four years ago, it might have seemed to some that the junction needed to be filled in to the greatest extent possible. Now, we know Bus Rapid Transit and the Purple Line will transform New Hampshire Avenue, the crossroads in Long Branch. Fort Totten is a retail and residential hub, and South Silver Spring Development carries on. Once we have redeveloped accessible commercial areas in all directions, and as the decline of brick and mortar retail continues, a big box of a building at the junction could become underoccupied or leave older properties underused as they were during the Great Recession. We can't predict how this all plays out, but we have to ask when the edges of Tacoma Park are developed, redeveloped. Will we wish we'd kept this central piece of ground open as a community outdoor living room and as a place where we could come together? Once we build on it, there's no going back. And finally, we have to think about equity. Since 2014, we've entered into a long overdue conversation about structural racism and economic inequality. We have to own the fact that our own Tacoma Park historical development was intertwined with the desires of white people to live and interact in white-dominated spaces. Given this history, whatever we do at the junction must resist the emergence of an ethnic or economic enclave in our community, and it must have a positive impact for marginalized people in our community. So, please ask whether the design or functioning of this proposed development could reproduce or deepen...
Thank you, Mr. Schlegel.
...existing patterns of inequity and separation and recognize that this decision...
Thank you, Mr. Schlegel. There's a long line of people, please.
Just recognize that this decision signals the values we're going to embrace...
Mr. Schlegel, I ask you to please be respectful of everyone else who's here tonight.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had a similar comment to his. I guess it was about four years ago I attended one of the first me, oh, sorry, my name's Joseph Gilday, and I live at 48 Jefferson Avenue in Tacoma. I think it was probably three, four years ago I went to one of the first meetings where the plans by various prospective developers were being presented. And at the time, I thought this was a great idea because, I was really excited because while the other side of town was in decay, this was pre-Republic and pre-busboys, and we had businesses that had been gone for so long I didn't even remember what was in the building, this side of town had a superstar. It has the co-op, which has been vibrant, thriving, contributed to the community for many, many years and still is. So, I thought it was smart that you were thinking of developing here where you have a business that's already popular and attracting a lot of traffic for the new businesses that would be filling in this new space. Well, of course, since then, the other end of town is hopping, and I think what the difference there is, is that on the other side of town, post-recession, local independent businesses have come in and they've reinvented the decayed remains of Video American and Summer Delight and places like that. And the success of the newcomers like Republic, I think, is due in part to the fact that they clearly took time to understand Tacoma Park. They did their homework. So, even Ace Hardware, which obviously is a big national company, had the good sense to present itself, themselves as a neighbor, as a community member. They didn't come in here to impose some generic version of retail, but they took the time to figure out how they could contribute and fit into the spirit and kind of revitalize it. Whereas, I look at the plans that NDC has presented and they just seem overbuilt for the size of the lot. You know, you've all been over to Bethesda and you see the McMansions and Chevy Chase people complain about these developers put houses that take up the entire lot and they're completely out of scale. And in this case, from looking at the plans, this building is taking up every available square foot, and I understand you want to monetize that, and it's pushing right up to the curb, so it's kind of urbanizing Tacoma, which I don't think is the right way to go. So, I think that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Danny May. I live on Willow Avenue. I would like to use my three minutes tonight to offer a reflection of the old Tacoma Park and what might be the new Tacoma Park. I could be wrong, and I kind of hope I am, but this is what I'm seeing. The old Tacoma Park was a place thick with environmentalists who loved nature, called themselves a city of trees, and had more Priuses proportionally than just about any place on the planet. They worked hard to build parks and make public spaces beautiful and natural. We see many examples of this around town. The new Tacoma Park? Take a look, please, at these two aerial images of Tacoma Junction, a place that technically at least belongs to all of us. It's our land, after all. The first image is of the land itself, our land. In the second image, imagine all that land, one of the last open spaces in the city, now under the control of a developer who wants to charge Bethesda rents here. And what do we retain of that land? Where's the green, open space we demanded from our land? See if you can spot the tiny sliver by the proposed bus and truck lanes marked in, or this is the, this is Ethan Allen Avenue. This is Ethan Allen Avenue up top. This is the sliver that's now the public space. That's what the people get for public space in this development, maybe the most congested, polluted spot in the whole development. Well, at least smokers will have a place where they can step outside and feel at home in the fumes. So, so much for the old Tacoma and the new Tacoma and our public spaces. And the old Tacoma under Sammy Abbott led the fight to keep the center of DC and the heart of Montgomery County suburbs from turning into an expressway nightmare. Thank God for that level of leadership and the willingness to commit civil disobedience even to protect inner-city and suburban communities and neighborhoods. The new Tacoma Park? By all appearances, our city government right now is considering a traffic nightmare in the middle of our town and making it infinitely worse by throwing unloading trucks and cars right into the middle of that worst intersection. It's not even clear where buses and bikes fit into the plan, but the final traffic insult, after years of denying our citizens a traffic study of the junction that the people clearly wanted, we now have such a study. Our city government wants to give us two weeks to review a traffic study that the experts take three weeks to do. We need much more time than that, and I hope that these two examples are, I hope they're not an example, they're not examples of the new Tacoma, but I'm skeptical about where we seem to be headed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May.
I'm president of the board of the co-op. The co-op has consistently raised the following issues in connection with this project. The need for safe and efficient delivery of its products, the need for replacement of the customer parking that will be lost when the site is redeveloped, the need for safe and efficient trash and recyclable materials removal, and the need to ensure business continuity during construction. The plan that was presented on April 4th does not solve any of these issues and in fact exacerbates some of them in ways not reflected in prior concepts. The 2016 development agreement imposes on NDC a contractual obligation to provide reasonable accommodation to the co-op's operation of its business in the co-op's current location. The plan presented to the council on April 4th does not satisfy this condition in a number of respects. We ask that the council defer a decision on the plan until it has been revised to address the council requirements. In addition, we ask that the council provide assurance that the co-op have at least four weeks in advance of any discussion of traffic issues to review and evaluate the studies prepared on behalf of the city and NDC to allow the co-op, not to mention the public at large, time to evaluate and respond to these studies in an informed manner. As you know, these studies are several hundred pages long with very technical and detailed supporting data and cannot be evaluated with a cursory review. The development agreement anticipated that NDC would continue its good faith efforts to negotiate an expansion of the co-op's existing premises into the new site. Those negotiations ended in May 2017 when NDC stated it would not accept rent less than $45 per square foot with a 4% annual escalator clause, which was financially infeasible for the co-op. Last week, for the first time since May of 2017, NDC expressed to us an interest in reopening those discussions with the suggestion that a more realistic rent could be discussed. The co-op last evaluated this issue a year ago. The co-op welcomes the opportunity to revisit the possibility of expansion, but that will take some time to study and to get right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Adam Frank, Boyd Avenue. I am a member of the board of TPSS Co-op. The lay-by design does not provide reasonable accommodation for the co-op's delivery needs and does not satisfy the requirements of IDC. and does not satisfy the requirements of Item Number Two or Number 10, Council Resolution The Development Agreement requires that NDC provide reasonable accommodation to the Co-op's operation of its business, which shall include access for loading of deliveries. The council's October 25th resolution affirmed this requirement by stating that the plan must accommodate delivery vehicles in a manner that provides reasonable accommodation to the TPSS Co-op. Paragraph two. Paragraph 10 requires, among other things, that the plan provide details necessary to provide reasonable accommodation to the TPSS Co-op for access for loading of deliveries. The plan makes no accommodation and includes no details to provide for delivery access to the Co-op. As the plan clearly shows, the access for loading of deliveries shown on the plan is limited to access for NDC tenants. The only ingress egress points shown exclusively serve the NDC tenants. Instead, deliveries to the Co-op will be required to transverse- transverse the length of the loading area, approximately 240 feet in any weather, the length of the Co-op building, and then into the Co-op. This layout adds an unreasonable amount of time and difficulty for the delivery services offloading products. The design is not safe, efficient, or reasonable. NDC has advised the Co-op that a lay-by is a non-negotiable design element, regardless of whether the Co-op expands into the new building. The Co-op's acceptance of a lay-by was based on this ultimatum by NDC and has never been an endorsement of the concept. The Co-op has significant concerns about this approach from the perspective of the Co-op's operational needs, the safety of its customers, as well as large concerns regarding the functionality of the Junction intersection and pedestrian and vehicular safety. For these reasons, the Co-op has been consistent in its position that any such delivery option has to be safe and efficient. The proposed lay-by is neither. This is perhaps the most significant issue of all the design issues for the Co-op, because without consistent delivery of the products that customers expect to be available when they shop, the viability of the Co-op will be seriously undermined through loss of customers to other stores that can maintain a consistent product selection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne Lowen, speaking as a Co-op Board Member. The elevator placement does not provide reasonable accommodation to the Co-op's business operation and does not satisfy the requirements of Item Number Three or Item Number 10 of Council Resolution 2017-03. Item Number Three of the resolution requires that the elevator or elevators be placed in a location that serves patrons and tenants conveniently, including patrons of the Co-op. The plan does not provide for convenient access to the elevator for patrons of the Co-op. The location of the elevator makes for the maximum possible travel distance, approximately 240 feet, for patrons of the TPSS Co-op. While other local stores have elevators from the parking garage to the store, those elevators are designed to serve shoppers and go from inside or adjacent to the store to the parking garage. That is not the case here. While the distance from the elevator to the store alone may not be unreasonable, a shopper must push a shopping cart along a sidewalk which may have other shoppers with carts, pedestrians, bicycles, and strollers. Additionally, it appears that trash and recycling bins will be located at the front of the corridor between the Co-op and the development to await pickup, or even at the curbside of the lay-by. Even with scheduled pickup times, it has been the Co-op's experience that traffic and other delivery issues allow for a window rather than a specific time for pickup. Shoppers will have to walk around these, and the trash trucks will have to determine how to get the trash and garbage from an anticipated restaurant and retail stores into the truck across the sidewalk in some way. Everything takes up space along the way, and the walk will be in all-weather conditions. In addition, there are the logistics of returning shopping carts from the underground parking garage to the store. It's unclear if employees could bring multiple carts in the elevator or how they would be safely maneuvered down the sidewalk to the Co-op. Moreover, the elevator location leaves the council directive in Resolution 2017-53, Paragraph 10, unaddressed. The council required that the plan include details necessary to provide reasonable accommodation to the TPSS Co-op for customer parking. This plan requires that customers who park in the garage either take the elevator to a street- well, take an elevator to the street level, walk approximately 240 feet to the Co-op entrance, return the length of the sidewalk with shopping carts, and back down the elevator to the parking level. The Co-op is very concerned that shoppers who must traverse this distance, often with young children and toddlers in tow and in any weather conditions, will have a significant incentive to shop at locations with more convenient access. There will be additional challenges if the elevator is broken or out of service for any other reasons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name's Diane Curran. I'm a resident of Ward Three, but tonight I'm speaking as a member of the Co-op Board. You heard a couple of our major concerns tonight about the lay-by and the elevator, and the one that I'd like to discuss with you is the issue of trash storage and removal, which of course is a very important function of a grocery store, a daily occurrence practically for the Co-op. We're concerned about a couple of major problems with this, and I want to just mention that our comments have been submitted to you or will be submitted to you in writing, so you'll have all this in writing as well, but just want to talk to you tonight and also share with the members of the community that are here what our concerns are. The first one is that this new plan doesn't make any provision for the Co-op's trash storage. As you know, currently, the Co-op stores its trash on the city lot, and the trash is picked up from there, but there isn't anything in the plan for the Co-op's trash. In fact, the trash storage area looks as though it might not even be big enough for the new tenants. So what we are anticipating is that the Co-op is going to have to store its trash probably on the other side of the Co-op, on the Sycamore Avenue lot, and somehow get its trash containers to the loading area on trash day, which means hauling it across the front of the Co-op. Of course, this creates obstacles for people who are going into shop and obstacles for traffic as well. The trash has got to be picked up, I guess, or what it looks like to us, from the lay-by. The traffic- the trash trucks need to go in there. There's a real limit to when trash can be picked up. There's a regulation that requires the trash can't be picked up before 7:00 AM. The Co-op opens at 8:00 AM, so there's only one hour during the day when you could have trash trucks go in there and not be interfering with regular Co-op and other traffic in the Junction businesses, and we think that's going to be an eyesore and maybe dangerous for people with big trash trucks pulling in there. And finally, we have significant safety concerns for the trash trucks, the delivery trucks, all these big vehicles using the lay-by, pedestrians and bicycles going by. It seems like it's going to be kind of a mess up there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce Kozarski. I live on Willow Avenue in Ward One. First, I want to thank the mayor and council for your hard work on the Tacoma Junction development. Please know that my comments this evening reflect no doubt on your good intentions. My reaction to the draft site plan can be summed up in one word: facade. Yes, the new plan has a pretty facade, but it's also a facade that hides unacceptable underlying problems. These problems are a direct result of NDC failing to meet most of the 11 guidelines in your October 25th resolution. I want to focus my three minutes on three of these guidelines. Number one, public space, is frankly a joke. When you subtract the sidewalk and street buffer, about 1,200 square feet of usable space is left. You might get one or two dozen people stopping to talk, but no public events of any size could occur, much less a truck garden. Number two, the lay-by is unworkable. It's a death sentence for the Co-op in this location, in my view, and a potential death sentence for pedestrians, bikers, bus riders, and drivers. As delivery truck drivers told the State Highway Administration on April 5th, multiple trucks often arrive and unload at the same time during morning rush hour. Traffic will back up and sightlines will be blocked for everyone, especially because with a lay-by, extra trucks will double park. As the fire chief testified, emergency response may be compromised. Plus, the lay-by will require Co-op deliveries to be moved almost the length of a football field to reach the building, and the draft site plan leaves no space for Co-op waste and recycling. This will not work for anyone, including any new restaurant or café. Finally, for guideline number 10, the draft site plan will doom continuity for the Co-op during construction. With the garage built underneath the sidewalk up to the street edge, the entire sidewalk and at least one lane of traffic will be closed for an extended period of time. The Co-op will have no way to receive deliveries and have trash and recycling picked up, and pedestrian access will be severely infringed. When you selected NDC as the contractor, its winning bid maintained the Co-op's off-street loading and delivery area. Then they did a bait and switch with the lay-by. The only way for NDC to meet the terms of your resolution is to go back to the original plan. Above all, this is public land, which should be used for public good, but under the draft site plan, most benefits will flow into private hands, while the public interest in maintaining our walkable, community-owned grocery store and improving safety will be harmed. Please uphold the principle of public land for public good, act in your constituents' best interests, and demand a new site plan that fully follows all 11 guidelines in your resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tina Schneider, Ward Six. Warning: I get very nervous doing public speaking. So I have 30 minutes of comments and about two-hour PowerPoint presentation that I could give you on better creative placemaking, true sustainable architecture and resiliency, maintaining social equity in a hot economic market, examples of some of today's most innovative architecture and community developments. Disappointantly, what NDC presented last week falls short in all of these areas. As you know, Tacoma Park is a unique, desirable, and cherished community. Real estate prices have soared, and it's not due to the fact that there's a metro station close by. It's because people want to live in places with character. They want history. They want architectural- I mean eclectic architecture, narrow streets with mature trees. They want unconventional. They seek a diversion from ubiquitous homogeneity. Tacoma Park is the Portland of DC, and people want to live, work, play, raise families, and grow here. So as council members, it's your job to retain the character and the integrity of the community while steering it towards a vision of the future. It's your job to sell- not to sell our public lands and our community to an eager developer proposing the most ordinary structure and below-standard county environmental conformities. What do I mean, you might be asking? NDC used the right lingo last week to sell you what is essentially a huge box with frontage just adequate enough to appease the historic reviewers. There is no artistic style, no artistic character, no creativity or uniqueness. This is a box that sits on nearly every square inch of a buildable portion of the land, leaving only a tiny dedicated public open space with expanded sidewalks abiding the loading and lay-by areas. Pictures presented to you shows beautiful trees along the sidewalk. I'm a landscape architect, and I can assure you that the underground parking will reduce the ability to provide adequate soil volumes for canopy trees to grow and reach maturity. It is your job to have loftier aspirations and by requesting greater design principles and parameters. NDC is boasting that the building will be lead gold. Lead gold is below the county's new international green construction code standards. Green- green- lead green perform- it does not even have high-efficiency buildings. How is this sustainable, resilient, and how does it come close to achieving the county's greenhouse gas goals by the year 2035? I didn't even see one solar panel on the roof, nor was the building cited to maximize solar orientation. It is your job to ensure real sustainability, which for every community starts with accessible, walkable grocery store.
Mr. Staya, you can send us your comments. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'm Robert Engelmann at 500 New York Avenue, and I want to thank you for the time to speak today and also for the fact that Mayor Stewart and Councilman Koval listened to an hour and a half or so of comments on Thursday. I think there may have been one or two other people from the city here. Thank you very much. Sorry not to mention you, which somewhat undermines some of what I'm going to say because I have some fears about this process. I am speaking out of a sense of some personal bewilderment, a little bit of guilt for not having been more actively engaged in this important city issue for a longer time, and a perverse sense of gratitude that I haven't been more involved. Because frankly, life is short, and I worry- I worry a lot that this is a lost cause. I know that your willingness to listen to these comments does undermine this concern of mine, but when I see the continual propulsion, momentum behind this plan and the happy talk about how wonderful this design is coming from the city and dismissing what's there now as a vacant lot, it concerns me greatly. This is not a vacant lot. The phrase "a vacant lot" reminds me of foresters talking about unproductive forests. It's simply a gap in the city's development, so to speak, in a highly-developed area. That doesn't mean it should stay the way it is, but it certainly does suggest to me that there isn't any particular necessity in a city, and certainly not one like Tacoma Park, to fill in every so-called vacant lot with some kind of full development. As Roger pointed out, this is an area- it's just a couple hundred yards where two state highways come together. You have Philadelphia and Carroll meeting and going on a- on a 410 and 135, I think it is, and going on a very small track that cannot be expanded before they separate and go their separate ways. It's bookended by the Co-op, a dearly beloved local cooperative grocery, and the fire station, which is absolutely essential to public safety. And the members and the people associated with those groups say, please do not overdevelop this area. The Co-op is one of our treasures, and I fear that it's almost an unspoken danger that we have here, that if this area is developed and we have double parking by trucks in the lay-by and congestion problems, that the Co-op will be thrown quite literally under the bus of what's going on there. Now, I urge you to demonstrate that I'm wrong, to demonstrate that you're really open. It's very clear that you cannot make this decision in a couple of weeks at the same time you're making the decisions on the city's budget. Please listen to the incredible passion you've heard for a while now as to why this is not Tacoma Park, to develop this space in this way and risk the safety of the children that one of the earlier speakers talked about growing up in this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Fitzpatrick, and I want to first echo nearly every single word that I've heard on the Tacoma Junction tonight from my neighbors, and I want to express my own alarm and disappointment over the redevelopment plan proposed. I have seen other neighbors- neighborhoods in this area make mistakes in development that have changed their character irreparably and believe that going ahead with this plan would be a profound loss to our community. I'm confused and discouraged that multiple versions of this plan are a dramatic departure from the priorities defined by the Tacoma Junction Task Force and the instructions of the City Council over the years. It is not consistent overall with the values of progressive and responsible development that we of all places should be embracing. We bought this land specifically to protect it from private development and to maintain its potential for public use, so I can't understand why the city is wasting this amazing opportunity to create a space of real value for our community. Public land should be used for public good, and I'm not against development of the Junction. And I haven't met anyone else who feels the same way either. In fact, I would very much like to see something creative and visionary done with this land. This plan doesn't put residents first. It does not place people over profit. I was struck last Wednesday by how many decisions and details- I was struck last Wednesday by how many decisions and details are still being worked out by NDC. And this is not the first version of the plan. Missing are crucial details, including the impact on traffic, safety, the lay-by, the parking lot, trash and recycling storage, the elevator, the size of the maintenance area inside the green roof, details on how the building will qualify for LEED certification, restoration and cleanup of the wooded area, the appearance of the back of the building, and more. Finally, we still have no traffic study. At the listening session with SHA this past Thursday, we were told we would see the results of the traffic study as soon as possible. It has been six days and still nothing. The city council cannot in good conscience take a vote until there has been enough time for all stakeholders to sufficiently digest the results of this crucial report. I have wondered if the city thinks that it is only a bunch of cranky old hippies who are afraid of change objecting to this plan. Well, we have cranky old hippies to think from much of what we love about Tacoma Park. So their voices carry a great deal of weight with me. Their voices carry a great deal of weight with me. Beyond that, I am relatively young. I'm part of the future of Tacoma Park, and I want to raise children in a place that is not afraid to do things differently. I'm not afraid of change. We're progressives, so let's make progress. All we have here is a private office space with upscale retail at the street level, nothing more. It takes up nearly the entire lot for the purpose of maximizing profit and is very clearly not to scale with the surrounding buildings. There is no green space for use by the public, no permeable surfaces, no plaza or community comments.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. You can email us your comments. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Liebman, 7500 Carroll Avenue. I'm director of design of a large DC-based architecture firm named WDG. We do a lot of residential retail mixed-use. Over the past 15 years, we've been working pretty continuously with Federal Realty as lead architect on Rockville Town Square and the Pike and Rose developments. We're currently collaborating with StreetSense on a major mixed-use development in the City of Falls Church, as well as in downtown Atlanta. I don't profess to be the retail expert that StreetSense is, but I've learned over the years from Federal Realty that issues of parking and loading are not details to be worked out later, but fundamental decisions that need to be ironed out at the very beginning of a project to determine that project's very viability. I love the idea of retail up the street from where I live, but it's got to be good retail, not just more filler. I believe there are still fundamentals that need to be worked out before this project can attract good retail. It's certainly not the aesthetics. I think StreetSense has done a wonderful job of scaling this project and evoking the variety and character of Tacoma Park architecture without resorting to silly replication. But this proposed loading solution is just nuts. Over the years, my firm has moved dozens of projects through the county entitlement process. Never has it even occurred to us to dare propose anything other than off-street loading solutions. Maybe there's an occasional retail space which gets cut off from a service corridor and an exception is made for like a single retail user. But an entire project? Absolutely never. And I don't know where this is with the county. I don't know if you spoke to the county planners, but I'm amazed if they would approve this as it stands. These days, working in DC, DDOT rarely even allows any truck movements at all on the street. It's absolutely all front-in and front-out, and that demands dedication of a certain amount of real estate from the developer. It's hardly environmentally sensitive to place back-of-house functions right in a public right-of-way. Maybe I'm missing something. When I was at the thing on Saturday, people from the city were referencing, well, there's a precedent that Ace Hardware is allowed to put 55 semis out on Carroll Avenue to load. That's a hideous precedent. It doesn't exist in most urban environments. I know it'd be terrible for us to condone that sort of precedent. I think what we're looking at here, the better analogy would be the equivalent of allowing Republic to put its trash out on the sidewalk every morning. Restaurant trash is wet, it's smelly, and it's abundant, and restaurants are necessary to anchor this project. So if we say no to this plan, what it will do is we'll make this project viable. Good retail, good restaurants, I don't think would rent space in a place where there's zero on-grade parking accommodation. I think those are big problems. But I'm a developer's architect, and it's not in my DNA to... Let me just finish.
No, I'm sorry. You can email us your... I didn't let anyone else finish, sir. You can email us your comments.
But one thing.
Sir, I'm sorry. Really, you can email us your comments. We still have a long line, and it's already 9 o'clock. People have to get home and go to work tomorrow. That's why we have work sessions all this month, and you can email us your comments, and we very much appreciate it. But I want to be conscious of the people who are still online, and Mr. Silverman is still sitting here, and it's almost 9 o'clock. So thank you very much.
The bottom line is, there are off-site solutions. Okay.
Mr. Silverman, would you like to talk about... Because I know you don't want to wait all night.
Yes, I'd like to talk about...
Sorry, I'm going to let him jump ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I apologize. My name is Larry Silverman. I live on Birch Avenue. I am the owner for many years of S&amp;A Beads, which for 29 or 30 years wasn't Tacoma Park. Last year, we moved down the block to the District of Columbia in part to avoid the inventory tax, which is a 2% tax on all the inventory we have. Now I hear tonight that after we moved, the council's actually thinking about eliminating this tax. Is this a coincidence? I don't know. I'm still very interested in the subject. Many of our customers who come to S&amp;A Beads are craftsmen and artists who are small business people. Once they accumulate $10,000 of inventory, they suddenly have paperwork, and they've got to come up with a 2% tax to pay at an odd season. There's no software. It's difficult. The tax is inauditable. It has no relationship to ability to pay. We could have a lot of inventory because we didn't sell anything, or we can have a little bit of inventory because we sold everything. It's just an opposite, it's a contrary incentive. I think on April 28th and 29th, we're having art hop in this city. All the stores are featuring artists. Some of those artists are business people. I think they, and many of them live in Tacoma Park, and it is the spice of our community. I don't think we want to discourage people like this or put burdens on them that no other municipality in the area, even in the state, imposes on its small businesses. I'm very delighted that you are thinking about eliminating this tax. I wish you'd done it 15 or 20 years ago, but I'll take what I can get, and I thank you very much for your diligence, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Silverman.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Neil Cohen on Columbia Avenue, and I want to begin by thanking you, as always, for your indulgence. The first time I think I've had the opportunity to speak to this new council. I come tonight to speak in support of the proposed site plan. Specifically, I know we're supposed to focus our comments on the architectural features, building materials, shape, height, et cetera. And I think that five years ago, when I walked in here and saw a lot of the same people here opposing a development at that point. They'll tell you now that they weren't opposing development, that they've always supported some development. But no, there was opposition to anything. It should be a park or a coffee stand, or where the land should be given outright to the co-op, a for-profit business. I was the only one standing here who said, you know what? This seems like a kind of a reasonable idea, the night I came. I'm sure there were other people. But the night I came, I was the only one that kept and said, this seems to have like a reasonable idea, and I spoke in favor of it. And I'm still in favor of it. But what I do think is that it has gone through many iterations. There have been many proposals by many developers and many iterations by this developer. And I came up here last time, and I said that I thought they made a swing and a miss the last time. And some people on the other side came up to me and said, oh, Neil, I agree with you. I think we're really close. I said, no, everyone's entitled to make a mistake. I think this time, they nailed it. The gentleman who spoke, a couple folks before me, who kind of disagreed with the plan, but he did agree that the architecture of the facade was evocative of Tacoma Park without being duplicative of Tacoma Park, being forward-facing while also recognizing the past. While, and so I think that the design does just that. It doesn't copy any other building here, but it does evoke that sense of place. Yes, it's larger. Why is that? Because people say they want good retail. People say they want to be able to walk to restaurants. Well, to do that, you have to offer good space. You can't just have filler because you have junky old spaces that are narrow and difficult to fill, that good tenants and good restaurants that many of you folks like going to Republic won't come to a narrow little spot. So, and the other thing that I do need to comment on, because it kind of touches both on the budget and on some comments that have been received tonight, is, and I have, I guess I'll do this. This is my visual display, is when this started, I had hair, and it wasn't all gray. Okay? And, you know, because to come up here and say, we stand for equity. We stand for progressive values. You're fundamentally standing for conservatism. I've got my nice stately home on neighboring street, on Sycamore Avenue. I opposed when they proposed housing five years ago, or supportive housing. And now people come up and say, oh, it should be supportive housing. Oh, we should have equity. Oh, we should look in the room, look in the mirror. You know, these are conservative principles that you are articulating, not progressive principles of environmentalism, sustainability, accessibility to people who use public transit and to all people in this community, not just the people who happen to own very valuable properties adjacent to it. Thank you for your comments.
Mayor, council, and city staff. Jeff Trunzo, Sherman Avenue, Ward 3. I support NDC and StreetSense placement of the building on the property for the following reasons. One, the building respects the generous setback from the street established by the Turner Building and Healy Surgeons. Two, the building placement respects the undeveloped sloped lot along Columbia Avenue and potentially allows for some restoration and improvement of the plant material and trees in that area. Three, this placement allows for a very large sidewalk between the building and the roadway and allows the activation of the sidewalk and green buffer space for people to interact with each other. Folks can now stroll safely down this block, enjoying the cover of trees and vegetation, separating the pedestrians from the four lanes of roadway. Four, utility functions. They can be safely placed along the roadway, potentially preventing dangerous interactions between pedestrians and vehicles and avoiding tricky maneuvering of trucks around, between, or behind the buildings. Five, the lay-by respects the placement of the new crosswalk. Six, the placement is environmentally sound, minimizing the building of new paved surfaces for vehicles. And seven, simply for the record, not that everyone doesn't know this already, but I'm opposed to using this site for surface parking of any kind or for vehicle access roads. We simply have all the paved surfaces we need in the Tacoma Junction right now. So, some more details. I support the building size and scale as a two-floor structure and the below-street-grade parking facility. These are all appropriate choices for urban infill location. I also like how the new building interacts and respects the height of the Turner Building, which I understand is somewhere around 20 feet high. I was surprised to learn that. Regarding the building design, I'm very pleased with the choice of exterior materials like bricks, the very large ground-floor windows to let in light, the operable windows on the second floor. And I also strongly support the use of canopies over the sidewalks, which invite passersby to linger and experience the spaces through the windows. I also like the rhythm of varying heights and materials and the use of small setbacks and changes of finished materials that give the feeling of walking down a long city main street block. The potential for an art installation at the front of the building and the inclusion of a green roof to slow stormwater runoff is very compelling. Finally, the new building should be recognizable as building of our time, and it should meet modern space needs. It should maximize the use of existing infrastructure like public transit and roadways. It should minimize degradation of the current locked screen area. It should not be a surface parking lot. It, of course, should be energy-efficient, functional, filled with light and air and relate to its location in Tacoma Junction, but it should also link to Old Town.
Thank you, Mr. Trunzo.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and my fellow citizens. I am the owner of RS Automotive at the Junction. I've been there 21 years, and I spend most of my time there from 7:20 in the morning till 6:00 over the years. And I've come here because, this is my first step, because, you know, looking at the design and stuffs of the building, I support some development over there, but this structure that I saw over there, I mean, I checked it online. It's just way, I think, a little bit too much for our, that little section. The reason why is because I know you guys, you all live in Tacoma Park. You all go to work in Tacoma Park. But I am there from 7:20 in the morning till 6 o'clock almost every day, you know? And I can see the change in the traffic and, you know, the amount of... The traffic is getting worse and worse and worse. Anyway, but everybody's already come here and given their opinions. But the reason why I'm coming here is I want you all to... You know, the small businesses that are already there, like the co-op, I think the city should protect them, you know? Like, because looking at the building design and the issues that the co-op is going to have, it looks like as though one of these days, the co-op will have to pack up and leave. And as it is already, you know, the developers already took one of my competitor next door, Tacoma Auto Clinic. You know, he's my competition. But, you know, I felt bad because the man, you know, he worked so hard, was able to open a shop of his own, an immigrant. And now all of a sudden, developer city people come and they say, okay, well, you know, we're going to do this. We're going to pay you a million dollars or whatever it is, you know? But, you know, how that guy, he worked hard, he struggled, raised this business. Now all of a sudden, you all are saying, okay, you have to go because there's going to be a new development here. Tomorrow, it can be us. So I don't know, you know, I mean, I would like some change. I would like some change over there, the junction. In 2000, you know, when we had the Old Town Meeting, I said, you know, everybody's forgotten us. All the functions are held over there. What about the junction? Let's do something nice, you know? And I think, Mr. Jared, I spoke to you about it too, sir. I live on Maple Avenue. He's my council member, and my business is in Ward 3. But I'd like some change over there. But I think, please, you know, why do you have to give it to a developer? Why can't the city develop by yourself? You know, like something small and nice, you know? So please, I would request us to consider that. And please, the co-op, there are small businesses that have been here for a long time. You know, please support them, you know? Okay? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Burn Kelly again, Westmoreland Avenue, Ward 3. Sometimes I feel like the politicians that sit up here are listening and want to respond. Sometimes I feel like it's an exercise in futility. I'm a landscape architect. I'm a site planner. I also do architecture. I created a plan for this site. I listened to what everybody said, and I tried to solve a traffic problem. I asked you to get the modeling of a traffic circle, to take care of left turns, to move that pavilion to a respite space in a circle when crossing, and shade and shelter for the traffic guards. I innovatively created a first-phase building, which is a loading dock that serves both buildings. I was emboldened and happy to hear that the co-op has now re-entered a discussion with NDC about lease and rents. The idea of the city developing it, we're the city. You're our representatives. You're not your own representative. You are who you hear and who votes for you. And I want to see a process where we are looking at what is really sustainability. Sustainability is not multiple tenants adding multiple dumpsters, multiple toilet flushes, multiple traffic. Sustainability is finding an expansion of our beloved co-op and not seeing it disappear. The co-op has said over and over, this is a death knell for them. Now, do you shop at the co-op? Are we members of the co-op? Have I been a member of the co-op since 1983? Did I help them move? Did I talk to Mr. Turner about giving up his business? And not to his son, but to the co-op? Yes, I've been involved with planning, master-planning the Purple Line. I represented the city for years on the Purple Line, Master Plan Advisory Group. I was on the Walkable Communities. I did the work on master plan for the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Master Plan Advancement. I'm in this business. I took a plan of my own volition from my firm to look at how we could solve many of the problems, and I respected the 35,000-square-foot. The resolution said that was going to be the maximum size of the building. We now have a building that is much bigger than that. Because why? They were able to buy Johnny's, the auto clinic, and get that. When I revised my plan with the possibility that that site was going to become available, guess what I put on it? Trees. I kept it open from front to back, so you have sightlines that are better. We have the possibility for a loading dock with a traffic circle that is on my site plan that I've sent to you, and I never really hear anything by, wow, that's a better idea. That's a better plan. Okay, you've had another architect in here who works for developers tell you the same thing about the audacity and craziness of a lay-by, okay? thing about the audacity and the craziness of a lay-by, okay? So why are you sitting here and you're continually, like, status quo is fine, damn the torpedoes, full speed ahead, Miss, Madam Mayor, and you're the leader of that?
Thank you.
My name's Karen Anderson. I live on Woodland Avenue in Ward 2. And my main question and comment tonight is, why? Why all this mess? It's a mess, you know? I've lived in Tacoma Park for 50 years, and I would like to see some of the traffic problems around the junction changed, but I like the old-time Tacoma Park, and I think all this development. Now, I like Burn's plan, Burn Kelly's plan. It's, it's pretty good in scale, but what's going on here is too big, and it's ridiculous, and it is a mess. So my comment is, please stop.
Jimmy Dacus, I live on Woodland Avenue, and I'm in Ward 2. And welcome, Cindy, our new representative. Lots of details have already been said. I'm gonna echo some of them, but I'll try to be at a higher level. Off the bat, I just wanna say that I think that we can do better. I think we all know it as a community, and I think that I actually believe that you, you know, you, you know, we can do better than the plan right now. A couple of issues, safety, scale, the co-op, and economics. I encourage everyone to watch the video. For those of you who are not able to be at the state highway session on April 5th, there is a video of it, it was videotaped, and the Tacoma Junction Community Vision put that up. And so I encourage people who did not attend to, to watch that, because it's really, really telling. And, you know, you can fast forward if you want, but hearing some of the, the truck drivers and hearing some of the, the fire chiefs talk about the safety issues is really sobering. So it seems to me that we ought to be resolving this current traffic problem before adding to it. People have talked about extra time. Maybe we actually should be trying to resolve that traffic issue before we exacerbate it. Second one is the scale. I was just really surprised at the scale of it. I think another, a number of people have, have commented on that. I encourage people to look at, and you guys to really stare at some of these, like Page 9, and imagine a truck in this lay-by, and then imagine trying to think about jogging or a bike or anything else going through there. This is the design, this is the, you know, the, the drawings from, from the developers. It, it's just hard to imagine that. And then on Page 20, again, just to look at it and to spend some time with it and think about it, and think about if that's what the scale that you really did want. It looks a lot bigger than what we originally had talked about and what we gave NDC to, to react to. Third is economics. I'm surprised at the lack of discussion of economics and fiscal impacts. I found that Michael Schuman's letter or memo to you was incredibly helpful, but it was also really frightening. And there has been a real lack of sort of discussion about that. I'd love to have a meeting, I'd love to attend a meeting, that we could go into some of those and talk about fiscal impacts and things like that, and the money that comes in and out, I think that would be really helpful. Lastly, the co-op, you've heard a lot about the co-op. All I will say is, it will not be worth it, from, from my point of view, and I think a lot of people here and the community, it will not be worth it if we redevelop this site and we lose the co-op.
Lee Peterson, Ward 2. I look forward to seeing you over the next several weeks, too, and sharing our thoughts as we go through this process. I do support the development of the lot, and I don't really have a lot to add to what has been said, because they're all well-taken points, I don't need to reiterate. But I, I don't agree that what was presented last Wednesday accounted for the 11 items that the council said to NDC you need to do. They did not meet, very few of them, if any at all. And we, and I say "we" collectively, the council really needs to have the courage to be able to say no. There's no schedule here. We don't have to have this done. Let's get it right. That's what we all want. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leis Vlantin, Elm Avenue, and I'm also happen to be Greek-Americans, and so I have a modest proposal. This is a Greek offering gifts. Didn't work, didn't work out well for the Trojans, but maybe it'll work out better for you. There's clearly a lot of divisiveness on this issue. I have strong feelings, there are people that I know on both sides of the issue that I respect, that are hardworking, that are well-intentioned. So I would suggest the council negotiate, get a final offer from NDC, and then put up, put it up for an advisory referendum for the entire city. I am telling you, I am telling you that if one side wins, I believe, knowing people in this city, the other side will accept the results. And I, if I am on the losing side, I will accept the results. The people will have spoken. It would be a tremendous thing to do in a very forward-looking city, and I would really hope that you would consider it. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Sally Kern from Ward 2. I live on Woodland Avenue. I just wish that you all could hit the pause button and hear some brainstorming from your new council members who've been voted in and your youth council. My fondest wish would be we get, like, good old-fashioned Blair brainstorming, out-of-the-box thinking, and answer some questions like, who does this new development not serve? What does the new development offer our lease-serve residents, like those living in the large apartment buildings in Maple and east of New Hampshire? Which residents are we not serving? What do we imagine will be the unserved needs of our future population? Does the current plan represent the highest moral and social use? Does it address the traffic of the future? Are there any other city buildings or entities that might be swapped into this space for better optimized use overall? Is there anything about the current plan which is unique to Tacoma Park? Or could you easily see it fitting into any other urban area anywhere in the U.S.? When a young person, like Althea, writes a college essay, they're encouraged to make or reflect the unique person that they are, and not write a generic essay that could be just as easily reflect any other student from any other community across America? Think about how other cities have worked to maximize their uniqueness. Did you know that Seattle once had a big box plan? They were gonna scrap the Pike Place Market and put, like, a hotel, big economic engine that would really serve their tax dollars? Old Seattle residents protested, and the city inside instead decided to maximize character and transform it into what it is today. It's a different kind of economic engine. I would say that if we go forward, it's a failure of imagination. And I would say, why can't we be thinking outside the box, like so many of you did with the community kitchen at the Presbyterian Church? Why couldn't there be something like a micro-business, you know, if you had, like, the, a workspace for low-income, low-income people trying to start micro businesses? What about if you had training for those who have a hard time entering the job market? Young people, people who don't speak English, folks re-entering society, we all talk about the prison-to-pipeline...
Thank you, Ms. Karen. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Maureen Taff Maralas. I live in Pine Avenue. Thank you all for your attention this evening. I want to address three points. One is the idea of the public space zone. As it is drawn on Pages 23 to 26 in the presentation that Street Sense made, it is an extremely small space. It shows tables and pedestrians, areas where people will be eating and walking, but it is right next to the area where trucks will be idling and spewing out diesel fumes. Where are the trash dumpsters? For a building with two stories of commercial and office space and a restaurant, I see no space for a dumpster. Does that mean there will be dozens of trash cans placed along the sidewalk on trash days or in the public space zone? The builders themselves said the only place for a truck to pick up is along that front streetscape. So I would like them to show a streetscape that is realistic and to scale, that shows the trucks and the dumpsters and the trash cans on a typical trash day, and not just an idealistic, unrealistic, not-to-scale drawing. Another issue is safety. Perhaps because I'm a woman or because I have been mugged, I look at spaces with a heightened concern and awareness for their safety. A major feature of this project raises alarms for me. An underground parking lot, which, in a building which backs onto woods and goes down to a street that is not visible from above, is a setup for heightened crime. If, is there going to be any kind of security personnel there? Who is going to pay for that? Walkability. Part of the appeal of Tacoma Park is its walkability. I can go a week without using my car. Yet the current plan increases the danger of that intersection for pedestrians. It eliminates bike share, it asks the city to move the city bus that's there. It is, if you, we lose the co-op, it'll be more people in cars to have to drive to grocery stores instead of being able to walk there. Lastly, this is supposed to be a public land for public use. What are the public uses of this space in this plan? How is this going to serve the public good and not just a commercial developer? Many communities fight to get a grocery store in their midst. This project is, in all likelihood, is going to push out the community-focused, in-walking-distance grocery store that we already have and make it virtually impossible for any other grocery store to move there in the future. It is, the current project is pushing out a known valued community asset for unknowns for the benefit of a commercial developer. We don't know any of the stores that will be coming in. Please represent the community and not a commercial interest. And don't feel that you must go along with this particular plan. Have the courage to demand that they live up to the standards that you have laid out. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, and good evening, neighbors. It's great to see everybody. My name is Mark Sherman. I live on Hancock in Ward 3. And I will come to many of the meetings that are forthcoming, but I wanted tonight to speak about a point that has come up a few times, but which I don't think has gotten sufficient attention. What is the problem that this proposal is trying to solve? Because unless we can answer that question, we really won't know what to do. The problem has sometimes been characterized with the word that I think is very often used as if it were a universally benign phenomenon, but which I see a real downside to. The word is revitalization. On its face, it seems like, well, who could possibly be against revitalization? It sounds like other words that are, you know, benign words, refresh and renew. But revitalization is a two-sided coin. And when I look at the junction today, as opposed to a few years ago, I don't see a junction that needs revitalizing. I see every available storefront in the junction occupied and spoken for. The only one that's not rented can't be rented because it's contaminated. And when that's decontaminated, I'm sure it'll be rented, too. We have a new bakery, we have a new Korean restaurant coming in, the music store is expanding its quarters, Mad Fitness moved to a new place, we have a new Montessori school. What exactly needs to be revitalized here? It actually seems to be quite vital. It reminds me of what took place in Silver Spring when the county decided that Silver Spring needed revitalizing. And so they spent $100 million building the new transit center, which, for those of us who actually take the bus, is much worse than what we used to have. We used to be able to wait for the bus on the outside with fresh air and trees. Now you go into this cavernous space and you hope you don't get hit. And Mark Erlich, our county council member, said at the time, you know, that we, we thought as county council members that we, it was sort of our duty, our job, to, to push the process of revitalizing Silver Spring, but in fact, he said, Silver Spring revitalized itself. We didn't really add to that. And I see the junction revitalizing itself. And I think the best thing the city could do is to stay out of the way and not make things any worse. Because I see with this proposal, things that would impede the flow of traffic, not facilitate the flow of traffic, and that, as so many other people have said, would take a community amenity, namely a grocery store, and hamstring it, take away its infrastructure. So please, think about the problem that we're trying to solve. Thank you so much.
Colleen Cordis, New York Avenue, Ward 1. I think what the council was going to talk about tonight related to the junction is building design and placement, and I hope that after this feedback, that this, that it's not a foregone conclusion, that you have to go ahead with that discussion tonight. By the way, I'm addressing these comments to the council, to the mayor, and to our city manager. Ms. Ludlow, you've been very active, you've been a leader in this process. I think you've made it clear that you'd like it to go forward. You called it exciting and appropriately sized, so I'm certainly addressing these comments to you. And in particular, I'm concerned about the very short five-week period in which a council with three of the six members are new, it's the first time they've had the opportunity and the responsibility of reviewing and revising the budget proposal from the city staff, and there is a tax increase, which of course is always a big civic responsibility, and at the same time, to be trying to rush to a decision on the Tacoma Junction when so many pieces are missing. The two traffic studies are missing, the bus stop is missing, which is, to me, is both an issue of racial equity impact, which should be marked on the agenda items for you. It's also, makes it much more, much less likely that people will take the metro to this development if there's not an easy bus stop there. There is the no, no accommodation plan for the co-op, which was supposed to be, should have been in this plan, and you have never scheduled a working session to meet with the existing businesses at the junction to find out what their response to this plan is. And that isn't just the co-op, it's the gentleman who's here tonight and the other businesses, several of which are minority-owned, so that's another racial equity impact, as is the workforce of the co-op, is good union jobs, good benefits, primarily people of color. So, so I'm urging you not to feel that you need to just sit there and go through the plan discussion on building design and placement. Please take the time to have a conversation about how you can rethink this schedule, either put off for quite a while, just go ahead and finish the budget, and then figure out whether you can say, "No, immediately, this development, this development doesn't work. We need something more visionary." Or take some time and wait until, yes, indeed, a month has gone by since the public's had a chance to look at the traffic studies, and then go back and really come up with something that meets the community needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Mariel. I'm a long-term Tacoma Park resident, and I live right near the, the junction. I'm also a daughter of a small businessman. Much, he had a business much like the businesses that currently exist along the junction. It's because of that business I was able to go to college. And I'm also Lebanese, and unlike, unlike my Greek friend here... And unlike my Greek friend here, I, like Sam Abbott, have a little difficulty with So, tonight, I wanted to ask this question of the council and the developers. I need to understand, like many others, how the proposed design will accommodate and promote the economic development of existing junction businesses. These are small businesses that currently exist, serve the residents of Tacoma Park, and it's upon these existing junction businesses that this design is being imposed. For example, how does the paid underground parking garage of 72 spaces serve and accommodate the co-op, which is the anchor business at the junction? How much will parking cost co-op shoppers if they park at the underground garage? How much will co-op prices have to rise to cover the costs of leasing spaces in the garage if this is what the co-op is forced to do? How much will the co-op have to pay someone to monitor their parking lot, which is free on the Sycamore side of the co-op, so that customers who shop at the new development don't use the Sycamore lot? The developers have said the garage will be a public lot that anyone can use. What will prevent a few metro riders from parking in this garage all day? How will the traffic increase created by the entry and exit to the garage support economic development for small businesses that exist at the junction? Will customers of these businesses really schlep across a dangerous congested intersection with music instruments, packages, laundry, pets, and children in tow to frequent these existing businesses? Will customers for the car places drop their car off during the traffic jams that exist in the morning? How will these other businesses survive during construction? Why has the council talked about supporting the businesses when the purple line is being constructed at the Langley University Junction, but they don't talk about supporting the junction businesses during a similar construction period? We need design that considers all businesses.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rick Leonard. I've lived on Manor Circle in Tacoma Junction for 32 years, and I own a building in Tacoma Junction on Carroll Avenue for 19 years. And I get to experience the traffic and congestion every day. There's been a lot of good comments made about problems with the design, which I agree with. And particularly, I'm concerned about the co-op, survival of the co-op after this is built, if it were built according to the current design. And I feel like there's going to be serious traffic problems with a steady stream of delivery trucks in this very narrow layover area. And I believe that there needs to be more thought put into the design. The scale of the project, I think, is too big. I think it's too close to the street, and it could definitely be improved. Thank you.
Yeah, TJ Matthews, Ward 2. I live on Lincoln Avenue. I don't think it's a coincidence that my parents named me after Tacoma Junction. In fact, on November 9th, 2016, I went to Tacoma Junction with my free hug sign and hugged about 100 people who live in Tacoma Park, who came to Tacoma Junction and cried on my shoulder. You're making an emotional impact, an emotional decision. And it really hurts that it looks like you're just going to give a rubber stamp to this. Where is the transportation study? You've heard this already? This is what should be coming first. It should be done. We should have a month to look at it before we even have this meeting. It's not here. Who wants to eat outside next to East-West Highway? Are you kidding me? Look at the little park benches that are in front of the co-op. Okay, maybe I've eaten there once or twice, but I stay there for five minutes and I go because it's loud, and it smells, and the ambulance goes by, and the bus goes by. Are you kidding? People are going to have dinner out there? That's not happening. Those are just going to be empty tables. Do something different there. That's just wrong. Approaching the question of whether or not the co-op has handled change in the past. I was a board member when the store was a postage stamp in Silver Spring. We changed. I helped build the former second location in Bethesda while it closed, but we changed. Remember when the co-op didn't have meat? Remember when the co-op didn't have wine and beer? Remember when it had a deli? The co-op knows how to change. It can handle it, but you've got to do it right. Don't turn Tacoma Park into a food desert. Thanks.
It looks like I may be the last one to speak on this. I just want to thank everybody, everybody, for being here and for sticking this out and hearing it out. My name is Greta Arig, and I have been serving the residents of Tacoma Park for the last 20 years as a teaching artist and traveling piano teacher. Year by year, month by month, new development project by new development project, I and other traveling teachers have experienced less and less ability to do our jobs. There is simply too much traffic to get from house to house in a timely way that we can make any kind of reasonable income. Vis a vis this particular project, I'd like to say that I think the design is simply too big. It's simply too big and invites too many new residents and too many new cars that we just do not have the time and space for here. In music, we need rests. Moments, periods of silence between the notes to create a beautiful melody. And in a city, we also need rests, both spatially and temporally. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Hello, members of the council. My name is Carter Doherty, 6 Crescent Place, in Ward 1. I want to thank you for your immense patience in working through the Tacoma Junction process. This has been a long one, even already, for the people who are new on the council. Unlike some people here, I believe you are fully capable of making an informed and intelligent decision in the course of the next five to six weeks, and I would encourage you to do that. I wanted to speak briefly about the concept of reasonable accommodation, because there are times that I think that people read in place of that phrase, "meet every whim of the co-op." But, that may not matter, because the co-op is not the ultimate arbiter of what constitutes reasonable accommodation. That is the role of the council, and I'm happy we're going to have your judgment in what constitutes reasonable accommodation. To my mind, I would submit that that means that the co-op has to work in good faith with the developer to solve these problems. Now, maybe that means moving a trash container? Outrageous idea, I know. Residents do it all the time. My friend Neil Cohen points out that without that, there would be far fewer supermarkets in New York City, for example. Maybe it means working out new methods of delivery, rather than simply insisting that there needs to be room to park two very large trucks at one time. I'm sorry to say that I feel like over these years, we have heard very little from the co-op about what it can do to solve these problems, despite explicit exhortations from members on the dais there about thinking creatively. It's all been about demands. And the result has been a kind of circular logic. The co-op hasn't thought creatively about solutions here, which leaves the co-op then free to say reasonable accommodation has not been made. And it always sticks in my mind that the former expansion manager, Marilyn Berger, said at one point, went from saying that smaller trucks and consolidated deliveries were not possible, to saying, "that's only possible with money and planning." Well, the co-op is profitable, it has a $500,000 grant from the state, go to it, think outside the box. I realize change is challenging, and, you know, someone referenced the famous "meet" decision, which I believe was an epically-long meeting, you know? Go to it, think outside the box, do what we need to do. But it would be great to hear something from the co-op along the lines of, hey, we think we have something that might work here. And if it doesn't, we have to start questioning whether the process is going forward in good faith. And I would hate to have to make that supposition. So, I really want to close by saying creative thinking is what we need, and creative thinking is what we have from the developer with this. We can talk more about that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kamau. I'm in. I'm a naturopathic doctor in acupuncture. I practice, live on 7120 Carroll Avenue. And I'm also an urban farmer, concerned about urban sustainability. So, I mean, I've worked with the co-op. I live right there. I think the traffic right now is really terrible. I think this project, I'd like to see the area developed. My neighbor next door, you know, they bought a house, and, you know, they're saying, oh, this is going to develop and the housing prices are going to go up. But if that means that we lose the community, I think that's a high price to pay. So, I think the traffic's already bad. It would be nice to see something develop. I think we need the co-op. Like, my business, it's beautiful, people come to Tacoma Park, they come to me. I think the co-op supports what I do as a practice, and anything that ultimately is going to get rid of the co-op is a bad idea, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You probably know who I am by this time. Robert Anderson, Woodland Avenue, about 200 yards from the co-op. Board member, vice president of the co-op, and crotch the old hippie, as I believe folks mentioned before. Just wanted to respond to a couple of issues that were just raised by our friend, Mr. Doherty. First of all, accommodations. When you talk about accommodations, we're not talking about getting the world by any stretch of the imagination. We don't want any guarantees. What we want is simply the opportunity to continue in business. We don't want the development to put things structured so that we cannot operate. That's all we're asking. We don't ask for guarantees of any kind. Truck size. We're part of a group of cooperatives in the northeastern part of the United States. We are the group that you see on the back of our sales brochures. About 40 of us. We get lower prices and then are able to pass those lower prices on to others because we get big trucks coming in. Now, those trucks come from Pennsylvania. They also supply Whole Foods. So, if we're going to get the suppliers that we are contractually obligated to deal with, they have trucks coming down from York. Those are four times a week. We simply don't have an option in that. Talking about moving the trash bins. If we move the trash bins, where exactly on our property do you suspect that we'll move them? The only place available that we have at this point is our parking lot on the Sycamore side. What does that mean? It means, basically, we lose four to five parking spots there. We also have to get a trash truck in whenever the trash truck comes. We've tried to get trash trucks to deliver or come to us at various times, but it's like the cable guy. You say, "come at 10," he says, "well, I'll give you between 8 and 12." And that's simply the way it goes. And even if they could schedule the time, you've got traffic, you've got snow, you've got all the craziness that Washington, DC has to offer. It was commented on that, you know, if things couldn't happen, there'd be fewer markets in New York. Well, I certainly don't expect or hope that we're looking to make this like New York. Be creative. We've been creative. I was in all of the negotiations with NDC, and we tried to work around a variety of different problems. And we continue to try to work around those problems. So, at that point, let's say I've got 14 seconds, and I would like to thank all of you for all of your hard work. This has been absolutely crazy, I understand that. And I just appreciate you all. Thank you.
I technically came in last in the Tacoma Park 5K two years ago, so I'm used to being in the follow-up position, the final position. I just wanted to share a conversation I had with Adrian Washington, the head of NDC, last week. After the meeting, I shared it with Councilmember Kovar, and I thought I'd share it with everyone. I said to him afterwards, "you know, you gave us 1,200 square feet of public space. I mean, who is going to go for that? I mean, are you... It would seem to me that it would be in your interest to give a little more, and you would get people on your side. It seems like you've done nothing to try to get a large group of people, perhaps the majority, on your side." I said, "why don't you pull it back? Pull it back a little bit, create some more space." And what do you think his response was? He said, "I'm not moving it a single square foot." And he said, "one of the reasons I'm not moving it back a single square foot is because that is my premier property." AKA, anchor tenant. That unknown restaurant is, in his mind, the center of this development. So, I feel he sort of gave away a couple of things there. You know, one is just how he views it and how he views the co-op, which we can think about. But also, the idea that he could say that to me, thinking he's in this power of negotiation. Like, I asked myself, "how could you come back after the October meeting and the resolutions with 1,200 square feet of space? How could you do that?" I would be outraged if I were you. I would say, "but what I'm getting is that the message that they are getting is that they are in the driver's seat. That they can do this, that they can get what they want." I don't get the sense that we have a lead negotiator here who is talking to them and saying, "this is what you must give us. These are the principal pillars." I don't get that at all. And I think that's sort of part of someone saying earlier, they were sort of sad that they felt this was, we were sort of singing on the Titanic as it goes down. "We're making beautiful music together." This isn't my line, this is someone else's. "We're making beautiful music together while we sing." So, I would encourage you guys to take a stronger hand. And if you ask them to go away again and come back, don't let them come back with something as sort of meager, or someone called it a joke. I think it's just an insult that they would come back with 1,200 square feet. Don't let them do it. Don't let them do it.
I'm Lorraine Pearsall with Historic Tacoma. And for well over 20 years, I've looked at a lot of development plans. And when I look at this one, yes, there are some very nice architectural elements. There are things that relate to our historic buildings, there are aspects of it, that I really like. Let me tell you what I'm very worried about. This building is way too big. It is over 40 feet in height. It is not commercial scale for Tacoma Park, Maryland. Perhaps Tacoma, DC, but not Tacoma Park, Maryland. Its footprint is huge. It was big enough at 34,000 square feet, but a 50,000-square-foot building now is really huge. My concern is, we are not seeing a building that is compatible with our historic district. And that's a very significant thing. And we can, this has to go before the Historic Preservation Commission. We do not have buildings of this magnitude in our historic district. And that's very concerning to me, what is being proposed here for that reason. I want to bring you back a little bit to our history. Because the people I'm concerned about haven't been mentioned... They said it would take 120 of our houses. That was fought diligently by the amazing people we had here at that time. At that time, we did not have the protection of a National Register District, which helps quite a bit. In 1992, when my husband and I moved here, we were told, again, there was interest in widening the road. I remember going to a meeting to speak out against widening the 410 corridor. That was in 1992. That went away. In the early 2000s, for the Purple Line, our route was proposed to be studied for the Purple Line. I went to the Maryland Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Ms. Pearsall.
I reminded them.
Ms. Pearsall, it's 9:49 at night. We've heard from everyone, we have a long agenda. If you'd like to email us or meet with us separately or come back another evening.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Think about the 410 corridor.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Any other public comments this evening? All right. Thank you. I'll move on to council comments. Any comments from the City Council? Councilmember Smith?
Quick question for the City Manager. I recently received an email from a resident on Carroll Avenue, but damaged to his property during a snowplow. Wanted to see if you had a chance to talk to staff about it.
Yes, it will be first.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Circe?
Good evening, everybody. It's almost, it's getting late. But I do have a couple of quick announcements. As Althea mentioned, this weekend, Saturday, at the REC Center will be the Love Tacoma event. It's a youth engagement event where we're partnering with a number, the Tacoma Foundation's Racial Equity Group is partnering with a number of nonprofits throughout the community that focus on providing services that relate to youth. So bring the kids out. It'll be a great opportunity for them to play with neighbors, but also for parents to learn a little bit about different volunteer opportunities as well as different service organizations. I also want to announce that we have a new Executive Director for the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. Yay! So I'm, I'm pleased to announce that Kaylee Gennold will be the new Executive Director of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. Kaylee was with the Hyattsville Community Development Corporation, where she managed a number of different community and economic development projects. Kaylee has also worked as a contractor with the Old Tacoma Business Association, coordinating the annual art hop. And she also worked as a community outreach manager for DC Greenworks, a nonprofit which promoted sustainable development initiatives, including installing green roofs and rain barrels throughout the District of Columbia. So we're super excited to have Kaylee. She started last Monday. Also, I just want to give a special shout out to the Chief as well as Acting Lieutenant Gilbert. Last night, had an opportunity to meet with Hillwood Manor residents about recent break-ins that were happening on 13th Avenue. And it was just great to have the Chief and Acting Lieutenant to come out and just kind of talk to Residence Ali folks and just give folks a little bit more information on, on what's happening in terms of patrol, as well as answer questions about the police segment of the budget. So definitely encourage folks, if you're interested in kind of learning a little bit more, not just about crime, but also about the Chief's vision, as was communicated in the budget, to please reach out. Lastly, the Crossroads Farmers Market, yay, on Ann Street, will start next Wednesday. So if you telework or if you are home, please come out to Ann Street and participate at the Farmers Market. They have awesome food for lunch, so please go check it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. I want to take a moment to thank everyone who came out tonight to share your thoughts. And I want to call attention to a couple of upcoming sessions that I'm planning for Ward Three residents. That will just be an opportunity for you to meet with me and talk about really any issue in the city, but I know there are a lot of people who specifically want to talk about Tacoma Junction. And so I am planning a session on Saturday, April 28th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And on Thursday, May 3rd, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. We'll hopefully have those in the community center here and I'll share some more details about those as we get closer to that, those meetings. And then just briefly, I wanted to note the end of our Maryland Legislative Session, which happened yesterday, and to thank our District 20 delegation for all of their work this session. And I wanted to note, one thing I thought was particularly positive related to the gun violence resolution that we passed a couple of weeks ago, that all of the bills that we supported in that resolution were passed this session. So that's some great progress. Those include banning the bump stocks, oversight of the handgun permit review board, the extreme risk protection orders, or red flag law, funding for gun violence prevention programs, and keeping guns out of the hands of domestic abusers. So, yeah, we certainly, certainly hope that those will be signed by the Governor, but I think that was great progress. Thank you.
Councilwoman DeValle?
Yeah, that, that unfortunately is not true for the renewables legislation that we supported by resolution, but there's always next year. Just very quickly, thank you to all the Ward Two residents who showed up and spoke today. If, as a new council member, if there are people that want to talk to me, if there's a local, a ward meeting you want to have, if there's a meeting with the, that I could arrange, Dolly, you and I know, have known each other for years. So I'm just putting that out there as an option for all of you, if you care to take me up on it. I know that I've been getting individual comments, and y'all know where to find me that way. Let's see. So, but the other thing I wanted to, to mention is we had, we also, thank you to Police Chief DeValle. We had a great meeting last night in Ward Two. About 20 people came out to listen and talk about police issues in our ward. And there's, for those of you who missed that, there's another one coming up, May 1st, Tuesday, 7:00 p.m. 1,001 Elm at the corner of Larch. It was very informative and anybody who missed the first one, you might want to check the second one. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. And thanks again also to everybody who came. I understand people couldn't stick around forever tonight, but it's helpful to have members of the public speaking about important issues like we just saw. And I'll have some community meetings as well on budget and on the junction. I just did want to mention one thing briefly, and certainly the staff and I have been in discussions about this, but there's the Pepco project underway in North Tacoma. And I really had to check myself, so I went back to the video from late January when Pepco presented before us. And honestly, I have to say that you don't get the impression that there was going to be six to seven weeks of detouring throughout the same area, admittedly only during construction hours from 9:00 to 3:00. But that's much different from what we were given the impression of, which was mainly one lane closing, one lane staying open, and then occasional shorter-term detours. So we are going to be meeting with Pepco tomorrow to try to come to some sort of resolution on that. I continue to think, at least for the larger vehicles, and I've driven through there quite a bit, I was through there twice today. When there are flag workers there, it helps to some extent so that you don't get people actually in a sort of face-off with each other. But when larger vehicles, including ride-on buses, trucks, and others of that size come through, it's really on Baltimore Avenue in particular, there's just not enough space for it. So my hope is that we can find some way of resolving that, detouring them away, at least at, on certain days when Philadelphia Avenue is also being dug up. So I'm going to keep working on that and look forward to talking to Pepco specifically tomorrow about what happened and why the nature of the project seems to have changed so much. Thank you.
And now I'm going to turn it back over to Councilmember Smith, so he can tell us some other good news out of Annapolis.
Well, you know, I serve on the Maryland Municipal League's Legislative Committee. And there has been an issue that we have been working on for a very long, long time. The restoration of highway user revenue. And so I am very pleased to announce that the municipalities in Maryland, 157 of us, will receive 80% of the money that was taken away during the O'Malley administration during the Great Recession. So this is an incredible win for the municipalities in the great state of Maryland. We've worked a long, long time on this. So I just want to thank all my colleagues on the, on the committee. I want to thank Chairman Ryan Spiegel of Gaithersburg, Candace Donahoe, the Director of Government Relations, Scott Hancock, the Executive Director of the Maryland Municipal League. We couldn't have done it without them. I mean, it's just an incredible win. You know, structural deficits are going to hit the state starting next fiscal year. But, you know, we got our money. And this is our money, just coming back to the municipalities. One other win I, I want to briefly mention, you know, be, before election season started, you may have seen some reports where some law firms were able to access this huge data set of emails. So there was, some believe that there was a problem with our PIA, right? The Public Information Act. So we made it a priority at the Legislative Committee level and we got this one through also. So your emails will be protected when you give them to either the county or, or the city of Tacoma Park. So you can expect that we will be able to say no if there's a PIA request to giving out your, your emails, because residents do expect that.
Yeah, it's, it's the email address.
Yes, email address. Email address.
So like when you sign up for the different alerts and things, it was, it was something that people who would sign up for those things wouldn't expect that then they could be contacted for other purposes with those addresses.
Right. So this is a.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
But if somebody sends us an email just about a topic that we're interacting on, that could still be subject to a.
That's different. Right. Okay. Yes. All right. So I just want to mention there's two big wins at the legislative level. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. And I will just update, I've been in meetings all day. I was at the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments Board meeting today. I serve as the Secretary of Treasurer there, and we were doing our budget there, too. But the exciting news that I wanted to share with you is that we passed a resolution today saying that 2018 is the year of the Anacostia. There are many activities that are going to go, be going on throughout this year. And I encourage people to check out the website. Think if you're a bike rider or canoeer, the, the benefits and also what has been going on in the Anacostia has been really terrific over the last few years. And it's been really a regional effort. So today, we saw a wonderful video on that. And I just encourage people to, when the weather gets a little nicer, enjoy the Anacostia. With that, I will turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you. A few items. It certainly has been something that we've mentioned, that Washington and Venice Hospital has made it clear that it intends on pretty much leaving the city completely, as opposed to leaving most of its, many of its health services on the site. This is very much in contradiction to what was promised through the certificate of need process in 2015. And so I would like to direct folks to our city website, Project Initiatives page on the Washington and Venice Hospital. There's a lot of information there. There's also two letters. One is a letter from the city to the Maryland Healthcare Commission regarding what we feel were improper actions and, and kind of surreptitious steps that they took that, that's very detrimental to our community. A similar letter was sent, more legalistic, but strong as well, from Holy Cross, because these were fairly significant unexpected changes. So I do want to call to folks' attention. A different subject, Dockless Bike Shares. There's been a lot of interest about what's happening with the pilot program with Dockless Bikes. For some reason, we weren't getting calls returned from the county for a little bit. But now we do have a meeting coming later this month to review the information. And the pilot will continue for some time, perhaps for a total of a year, but we'll be seeing what those statistics are and how it's used and, and if there are issues that are documented. Yes?
I didn't mean to interrupt, but I had a question.
Okay.
Oh, are you, did you finish that, that piece?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I may have missed the idea that after the six months, there would be a potential for a second six months, and so I apologize for missing that. But I also think that, you know, there certainly have been some concerns raised about that it can sometimes be difficult to get in touch with the bike companies when they're left in inappropriate places. And I don't mind if it takes a little bit longer for us to hear back from the, from the, from the county, but I wouldn't want a whole additional six months to go by without us having a chance to talk about what the experience has been here.
We intend, we intend on sharing the information that we learn in this, in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I wanted to note for the record that we've made an administrative correction to a resolution related to sidewalk construction policy. It was brought to our attention that there was confusing language in our Resolution 2015-32, which identifies kind of how people request new sidewalks and, and how that gets voted on in that process. I put, after extensive research, right, Jesse Carpenter, extensive is not the, doesn't fully adequately describe what it took to go back and look, because the topics were from 2012 and 2011 of council discussion about sidewalk policy. What we determined was that in 2012, there was a resolution that went before the council that had two options, and those two options were in the text. And once the council decided which of the options, the one that they didn't choose was not removed from the language of the resolution. And then when the policy was changed somewhat in 2015, the same language carried over. So we had this conflicting language in the document. Our Public Works Department has followed the process as directed by the council the whole time, so it's not that it had any harm. But we have deleted the couple of words that made the confusing area from the 2015-32 resolution. So I just want that to be on the record, we've been doing it the right way, but there were some extra words in there that did cause some confusion. I wanted to give some kudos to folks. Our staff has done an enormous amount of work. We had open houses here for the budget and for the Tacoma Junction project last week. We also had a fitness expo at the REC Center on Saturday. A lot of work was put in by staff to, to handle those. And I appreciate that at the fitness center, we had the police department helping out. We had city TV filming it. And then for the open houses, we had representatives from almost every department here. So put a lot of time and work into it. I think it was very useful, certainly for me, to have some of the questions that were directed my way. And I think that's it.
Great. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to our first, our only voting item tonight. A single reading ordinance awarding a contract for a resident survey. I'll turn over to Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so this item is asking you all to consider authorizing an award for a contract for a new resident survey. The last ones were conducted in 2014, 2009, and 2007. The current fiscal year budget includes $50,000 for the next iteration. We put out an RFP in January with about a month-long deadline and got three responses. A committee was convened to review the RFP based on the scope of work that we were looking for, which I'm not going to go through, given the late hour. But there was unanimous support for selection of National Research Center to award the contract to. In addition to their, their vast experience, they had tremendously more experience in surveying municipal governments in particular than the other, the other firms who submitted RFPs. They also had a reasonable price tag associated with it. They also have conducted resident surveys for the city in the past. So it's the staff's recommendation that you award the contract, authorize the City Manager to award the contract to the National Research Center. In addition to their vast experience, they had tremendously more experience in surveying municipal governments in particular than the other firms who submitted RFPs. They also had a reasonable price tag associated with it. They also have conducted resident surveys for the city in the past. So it's the staff's recommendation that you award the contract, authorize the City Manager to award the contract to the National Research Center, and we hope to get this thing kicked off very soon after a contract is awarded.
Great. Councilmember Siemens, and Professor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask about the, they're going to be conducting the survey, but is the city or are they going to be actually constructing the questions?
A combination of both. We have final say in which questions are going to be asked in the survey. We'll be building off of the one that they've used in the past, so that where questions are still applicable, we can see how we've done over time. We plan to use this survey also to gather more information about how our service delivery is perceived by various demographic groups in the area. We also hope to get some information that we can use to better craft racial equity impact statements moving forward.
Yeah, in the past, my concern has been that we often get the answers we want to get, and that some of that can be from the way the questions themselves are formulated. And so I'm wondering if the professional assistants focuses some on the actual formulation of the questions in that regard, so that they result in kind of unbiased replies.
Yes, I think National Research Center in particular is very adept at working with municipalities to create questions that eliminate bias to the extent possible. Additionally, we'll certainly float the surveys by council once it's near complete, to make sure that you all don't have any concerns with what we're being asked, making sure it covers what you would like us to ask, and if there's anything missing, any information that you would like pertaining to issues of particular importance to you or your award, we can certainly-
I appreciate that. Again, my primary concern, though, is that the survey be constructed, the questions be constructed in a way that provides reliable, unbiased replies. And in the past, I've voted against these surveys quite often because of my concern that we're just getting the answers we want to hear.
Sure.
And not really getting the feelings of the community. So I'm glad with the way the survey process has evolved through the years to where we're now actually reaching out and, I think, getting a good sampling from the city, from the city residents. But again, I remain, let's see, I am not as confident that we are still asking the questions in a good way. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. I know this year we were talking about doing some focus groups, but I was just a little confused in how the agenda cover sheet was written. So are we doing the two focus groups? Because it says possibly.
We are going to be, so when we put, this scope of work came from the RFP, and we received information from, in each of the proposals about how much focus groups would cost, what they would entail, et cetera. Our plan and the proposal that NRC provided includes two focus groups within this price proposal, and then we can pay additional money for additional focus groups. And we still have a lot of conversation about exactly what we're going to have those focus groups focus on.
And I don't, I think, sorry, if I could read this. They didn't put in here if we asked for focus groups with hard-to-reach populations, because usually those focus groups cost more money.
We had some back and forth about that, and we just need to be able to provide them with some more additional information. Unlike some of the other responses we received, they have a lot of experience conducting focus groups, including experience with hard-to-reach segments. They all are going to need more specific information from us before we can, you know, outline exactly what they're going to be doing with the focus group. And we'll need more information from council about, you know, the limited resources that we have, where we want to put those in terms of-
We also have some funds in the proposed police budget for some of the focus group funds. So we really want to make sure, we don't know exactly what those focus groups are going to be yet. Partly, there may be some that you can think of now, but part of the reason for doing the survey first is also to identify if there's certain subject areas or groups that really didn't feel represented, that we want to then pursue more information with.
Okay, so you're thinking about the focus group after the survey?
We can do it that way, yes.
That was my expectation.
Yes, yes, we can do it either way. We can do it alongside of, if we know exactly who we want to ask and what questions we want to ask of them through a focus group, or we can wait until the survey is completed.
And we can have more of those conversations. I think it goes to Councilmember Siemens' point, that sometimes you do the qualitative before doing the quantitative, so that you are making sure that you're identifying the issues and your questions are more representative of the concerns. And I don't know if Councilwoman Circe wants to add anything, but she's nodding her head.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's spot on. You know, if the goal of the focus groups is to identify what are the key questions that we want to ask, and what are the core measurement concepts that we want to try to capture-
Sure.
Then we would have those focus groups before we, you know, during the question and development stage. I don't know to what extent, you know, we would be potentially piloting any questions and the costs associated with that, and also whether or not there are going to be any kind of incentives for respondents. So are you giving people pens? Are you giving them a dollar? Like, what are we doing? Are the costs associated with that included in this as a way for us to try to incentivize people to respond?
Okay, yeah. I do not believe there are incentives in this price package, but that's something that we can-
That doesn't matter. That doesn't mean that we can't have those discussions. We'd love to talk with you all about them.
Yeah, you have two researchers on the council this year.
I was going to say, very fortunate we have survey research experts.
I'll give you some, you can hand out the name on them and my contact.
People will be lining up to take this survey and be part of the focus group.
Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. I also wanted to ask about language. I noticed that the RFP included translating the survey into Spanish. It didn't elaborate on other languages, and I was looking back, it looks like last year or the last time we did it, there was an off, there was a card translated into other languages and then a number they could call to do the survey in those languages. Is that, is the anticipation that would be the same?
For now, yes, but we can talk a little bit more about that also, because we have not exactly gotten our bang for our buck in terms of getting responses and from languages other than English through the surveys. That's one of the things I was thinking focus groups could be good for. So, yeah, we can discuss the details as we work through the process.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, I pressed my button before my brilliant colleagues all spoke, so I'm just going to say I'm a vote for the council having him put into the questions for languages other than English and Spanish, and for the focus groups preceding the survey.
Awesome, all right. Will someone like to move the ordinance?
Sure.
Councilmember Dibala, second.
Second.
Councilwoman Circe, any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Dibala, sorry, did you have something to?
No.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right, it's a single reading ordinance, so I'll ask the clerk to take the role.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostick?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Awesome, looking forward to it. Okay, let's do the next work session and then take just a break while we pull up the PowerPoint and get to the final work session tonight. So the next work session is regarding the proposal to eliminate 100% of the inventory portion of the personal property tax. I'm going to turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you. On February 21st, we had a discussion about the personal property tax and the inventory portion of the personal property tax. For background, the city is expecting to receive this year and, I guess, new, perhaps in FY19, a total of about $420,000 from the personal property tax, of which about $100,000 is for furnishings and equipment, and about $320,000 is for inventory. At the time that we had the discussion in February, there was a discussion about removing 100% of the inventory portion of that for FY19 and offsetting the amount of funds from a commercial real property tax, as I reported after that. That is not something, getting the commercial property tax set up in the county's tax billing system is not something that we can do for FY19. What I have included in the FY19 budget is the same amount of personal property tax revenue as I'm anticipating for this year, about $420,000. And my proposal is to proceed with removing 100% of the inventory tax for FY20, not FY19, and over the course of the next few months, making sure that that communication is made to the state, which has to take certain actions. And we have the discussions internally with our business community, and then with the county to define the commercial real property tax process and what that covers. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but given the late hour, I think my basic question is, would you support my recommendation to not remove the inventory tax portion until FY20?
And I just want to say, before I open it up to my colleagues, one, thank you to Councilmember Kovar for continuing to keep this on our agenda and to advocate for it, and Laura Barclay, the Executive Director of Old Town Business Association, who was here earlier, has left, has also been very helpful. I'll say from my perspective, I support the City Manager's recommendation that we keep the personal property tax in this year's budget, but I do think that we should pass an ordinance over the next couple of weeks to make it clear that we're taking it out of the FY2020 budget. We have been dealing with this for a long time, and I would like to have us vote on it for the 2020 budget, so that we make sure that we're dealing with the issue. And then as soon as we put this budget to bed, come back to looking carefully at a commercial property tax rate and how to offset those funds. So I'll just put that on the table, and I have Councilmember Smith.
I just want to go on the record and say that I do support your proposal to eliminate the inventory tax, the property-
Right, the inventory portion.
Yeah, inventory portion of the tax in 2020. You know, last time we discussed this, I think I said that I only wanted to eliminate 50%, but I think it's better that we just eliminate 100% of it. But I will not support offsetting this with the commercial property tax, because all that is going to do is push that cost onto tenants. So, I mean, if we are really trying to help the tenants by eliminating this tax, then we should eliminate it and not try to tax them in a different way, or fee in a different way. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I think I'm mostly in the same spot that Councilmember Smith is. Like him, I've supported some of the concepts previously of exempting some portion of the inventory tax such that the vast majority of the, and all of the smaller businesses in the city would no longer have to pay, and that would include most businesses that are based out of people's homes. We had a meeting recently, and the mayor was there, and I believe Councilmember Dibala was there as well, and it was organized by Laura Barclay, included a number of landlords and also business owners mainly in the Old Town area. And they talked about what the impact would be if we were to get rid of the inventory tax. They all liked that idea, but they didn't like the idea of replacing that in sort of an equal amount with a higher commercial property tax, because either that would tend to get passed along to all the business owners, again, admittedly maybe spread out a little bit more, but also in some cases, many of the landlords would have to, I don't know if the technical term is eat the tax, but they would, because they have longer-term leases, they would still have to pay it, and then maybe several years down the road, if they chose to, they could pass that on to their tenants. But, you know, a lot of the people have longer-term leases, I think, as we know. So if, I do think it's important to send a signal that we're trying to take some steps in terms of the inventory tax to support businesses here in the city, and so I'm okay with the idea of just repealing it completely, with the idea that that'll take effect in another year, because we're always off in terms of the way the calendar works, and again, that's happened to us this year. I guess I would just say, for me voting in favor of doing that now doesn't constitute support for in the following year's budget, having a compensating increase in the commercial tax.
And that's what I said, that what was on the table is to get rid of the personal property tax for 2020, and then as soon as we close the books on this budget, we'll schedule work sessions to begin conversations of if and how we might do it.
So the only other thing I would ask then, and maybe Ms. Lilo could just talk about this, how would that likely work in the following year's budget? Because obviously, you know, you've suggested, and of course, we still have to hear the details about this and decide whether we want it, but you've suggested adding some additional positions, some of which would only be proportion of the coming fiscal year. So then if they're there for the full fiscal year, the following year, that may have a bigger hit on the budget, right when we're possibly thinking about compensating for that. So can you just talk a little bit about that?
Sure. I mean, if there is a determination not to get $320,000 worth of revenue in 2020, then it has to either come from somewhere else, or something gets cut. That's part of the budgeting process. And so that's, I will say that the removal of the inventory portion of the personal property tax is one of the recommendations of our Economic Development Strategic Plan. I do think it makes sense for us as a community that's trying to keep small businesses here. But, yeah, we'll have to, like, work on the taxes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Councilwoman Circe?
Thank you for that. I have always felt pretty strongly that we should eliminate the inventory portion of the purple line on Brian. Well, it's normally in bed by 10:00. The personal property tax. One of the things that does concern me is our budget outlook. I am concerned about the message that it may send if what we ultimately decide that, hey, we want to in 2020 cut taxes for, you know, not try to compensate, well, it has to come from somewhere, and this year we're talking about, or at least the recommendation is that we're increasing homeowners, we're increasing property taxes as a whole. So I think it's important for us to figure out the right strategy to, you know, eliminate the tax such that we can communicate that we want to keep and maintain small local businesses here, but also think critically about how that detriment to the budget is going to impact not only other services that are provided, but perhaps, you know, property taxes for single-family homeowners and other residents in the city. So, you know, I agree with the proposal that we should, you know, unfortunately, table it for now, and then once we get more of our ducks in a row, not only as it relates to, you know, making the resolution and an ordinance kind of showing our commitment to eliminating the tax, but also working with our colleagues in the state, because I know there's some definitions that we have to come up with. There's just a lot of things that need to be figured out in order for us to even determine the feasibility of increasing the commercial tax rate, you know what I mean? To try to figure that piece out and really understand the impacts of trying to compensate the dollars. So I know it's late and that probably made very little sense, but, you know, my primary concern is the financial impacts that we're going to have to face, and we could either, to some degree, maybe prolonging the inevitable, which is making a hard, fast decision about increasing taxes somewhere in order to maintain the services that people have come to enjoy.
Right, I think one thing that, you know, we've not taken advantage of as a municipality is our options to kind of define what gets taxed at what level, because counties don't have the option to have different tax rates for commercial or residential or other things, but municipalities actually have a lot of flexibility about that. So we may want to spend some time about kind of right sizing whose burden is what and who should be paying those kinds of things. That's not to say we don't also look at services and what, you know, and making sure that we're as efficient as possible, but also just right sizing taxes so that it appropriately addresses the services that those entities get, I think, is a good part, a good strategy to look forward to.
Councilwoman Kostick?
I share some of the sentiments that Councilmember Circe just expressed. I support postponing this until 2020, but I also want to look into the commercial real estate or commercial real property tax slate. And I think it will be important to- And I think it will be important to consider the impact that that not, if we just chose not to do that, that that would have on residents' property taxes. So I think we should take a look at that. Thank you.
Councilwoman DiBala?
Yeah, sure and sweet. I like the mayor's proposal to, in the next few weeks, vote to eliminate the inventory part of the personal property tax for businesses. But I'm not ready to give up, once we get back through this budget, I'm not I'm not ready to give up on looking at ways to restructure the commercial property tax so that it applies fairly and recoup some of it, or to look at some other alternatives for for recouping some of that money.
Okay. Awesome. All right. So then we'll keep, we'll take off the tentative and we'll put it on the agenda.
I think it's on for next week, so we'll go ahead and bring it.
And we'll get staff ready right in that. All right. I need a break. So we'll come back. Sorry. You guys can get your PowerPoint up, but I need to stand up for a minute, and these lights are really hot. So 10:30, we'll come back and do our last work session. We're talking food and snacks. All right. It's getting that tight. All right. I think.
So Kate, I can kind of start off.
Yeah. All right. We're we're going to do our last work session of the evening, and I'm going to turn it over to our city manager to kick us off.
Thanks very much. I just wanted to start this this segment of the evening with a quick overview that I'd like to do each time for the different work sessions. First, wanted to just remind people about how we're going through this process, and because there's lots to look at with the development project, we are doing it in chunks. And I recognize that the chunk that somebody might wants to do first, we don't necessarily get to do first. But this one for tonight is on building design and placement on the property. And as we had had kind of running through the public comment period, the different kinds of components that you look at when you're considering the building design and placement on the property. And in your package, there's a little bit of a chart that you can fill in as we go, which looks at elements about the budget, the planned design, so you can make some comments to yourself. Does this seem to, are there questions that you have about this kind of element? Are there, this does seem to meet, you know, this is positive, this is negative, those kinds of things. So this is a way to keep a running chart for the different topics, and we'll have them specific for each of the different work sessions. I also wanted to mention that there's, you know, this is the city's part of the process, at least the first stage of the city's part of the review process. And as you've already seen, there's iterations of the plan. It will continue to change over time as we go through the various steps. When you have determined that you're comfortable with a site plan, which is still to come as as you go through these various steps, it then goes into the Montgomery County Development Review Process. And the Montgomery County Development Review Process incorporates incorporates the expertise of many agencies to evaluate the projects. It is an inter-agency task force composed of representatives from public agencies and utilities, including WSSC, PEPCO, State Highway Administration, County Departments of Planning, Permitting Services, Environmental Protection, Public Works, Transportation. They sit together, they review environmental impacts, the traffic studies, the fire department requirements, the utility plans, sediment control, many other kinds of similar considerations. And following the staff review, the project would go to the planning board for a public hearing and decision. There's also the architectural review process that goes through the Tacoma Park Facade Advisory Board for a recommendation, to the Montgomery County Historic Preservation Commission for a historic area work permit. As as this is going forward, there may be changes to the plan or other elements that become an issue or something that can come back then to you to consider, weigh in. There may be a really good suggestion by the Development Review Committee that you say, oh, that's a different way to handle it. Yes, that that continues to advance this criteria, or conversely, you could say, you know what? That's not advancing what you want to see for the junction. It may have some other issue that you want to weigh in on. And so there's a number of different steps. I wanted to be clear that the State Highway Administration's review does really come through that development review process. And so as we go through this, yes, we will have a lot of time to look at traffic studies, and that is something yet to come. But I just wanted to make you and the public aware that, you know, there are many yet steps to look at this. And so what we're going through tonight is building design and placement. I would like you to, you know, try to focus on those elements since it's late. And if there are some elements that come up that are really for another session, you know, we can kind of take a note of them and maybe do some research and bring them back at that appropriate time. So I'm going to turn it over to Colin from Street Sense, and we've got a few slides to show, I guess. I haven't even looked at them yet, so I'm looking forward to seeing what you've got.
Oh. I can't. Something's wrong with mine. Yeah, you're good.
Okay. Great. Colin Green from Street Sense, representing the NDC team. Long time no see, last week, but wanted to take a few moments based on the topic at hand this evening of building design and placement to just share a few slides, and we've supplied you with hard copies of them so you can kind of look at them once I'm done. The topic this evening has a lot to do with where the building is on the site. We've received questions about height, distance, et cetera. We hope that those are answered through the dialogue and through some of the pieces that I'll share, and have worked hard to try to make sure that as we receive things, we can respond to them. So we're continuing to move through that, as Susie said, that iterative process. From the building design standpoint, we just wanted to again express that we are working very hard to accommodate a building that will be a part of this neighborhood, that will start to form a fabric that currently doesn't exist in terms of a continuance from northbound and southbound Carroll Avenue toward the site, that we think that there's some repair work that can be done by a project of this type that really helps to engender a neighborhood feel. We are, we have provided these sketches and character studies as a way to really show how they get, how this place can be perceived, that it is about experience, it is about how people engage with the building, how the building engages with its neighbors, and how that whole space actually feels. We do have flat elevations and drawings that have measurements attached to them, but we want to make sure that we're paying the right attention to all of those different factors, how you view it as a pedestrian, how you would view it from across the street, how you might view it from some of the other positions around the site. And so we are continuing to look at these in terms of our more detailed and technical work that we're pursuing in terms of height, distance, depth, et cetera. But from a design standpoint, as we've said a couple of times in the past, we really wanted to create something that wasn't necessarily about a particular style, but was about that ground floor experience, was about something memorable, something permanent, something that endures, and something that can be welcomed into a neighborhood like Tacoma Junction in a city like Tacoma Park. The first image that I have on the screen is your page four, which really just focuses on some of the distances from building corners to curb faces and other objects around the site. Rather than kind of read them going around, we wanted to make sure that the dimensions of this project start to explain in the context of other buildings, how they relate to the curb face. You know, the the co-op's corner is about 35 feet from corner to the front face of the building, at the point where our service entry is to the corridor is 40 feet. And then how we're measured actually on the back of the site toward Columbia, just to sort of give people that identification of where the building sits with respect to not only Carroll Avenue, but adjacent buildings, et cetera. We're about a foot and a half away from any part of the co-op building, so we're completely away from that wall that exists there. On the opposite side, next to the Healy Building, we're about 24 feet away across, which is where our ramp goes down to enter the building. The next page actually starts to show a few of these dimensions in the opposite direction so that they're actually the dimensions of the building and the box itself, just to kind of walk around, understanding what those relationships of space are. There were a lot of questions about, you know, what is 50 feet? What is 60 feet? How do those really sort of feel? And so hopefully, these are a little bit comparative as well, so we can sort of say, okay, that building is 200 feet long, but how does it actually, where does it make the breaks? Where do those? Where do those points actually occur?" On Page 6 is the elevation that we've shown, but with specific dimensions for some of the things that we think are not only important to sort of everyday people, how high is that building? But also reflect on how tall this building would be recorded in terms of Montgomery County's review process. And so the dimensions are shown here briefly. If you look over to the right-hand side, the dimensions that are shown on this, the first floor height is 20 feet from finished floor of the retail level to the finished floor of the office or second floor space. It's about 18 feet maximum clear distance, but with equipment, ventilation, et cetera, that'll lower a little bit. We wanted to make sure we had a nice, healthy retail height for that space. Some of those spaces could be even lower, depending on how they get finished out. Going up again, from the sidewalk level up to the second floor, finished floor is 34 feet. And that is, I'm sorry, that's to the ceiling, to the height of the roof, sorry. 18 feet clear, 2 feet of structure. The 20-foot line is above the sidewalk for the finished floor, and then above that, 12-foot height, 2 feet of space. And then the top line of that finished floor in the staircase is 34 feet. The way the county would measure the height of this building for its allowances would be from the midpoint of the building at the curb to the flat roof, to the top of the flat roof. So it would exclude any parapet that is going around the building that does things like hides equipment or provides some of that design work. That number right now is at 34 feet 10 inches. So that's where we're sitting in terms of the sidewalk to the height of the building. So in the county's mind, that would be what we would call the height of the building. We've also identified that right now, we're looking at the tower that includes the stair and the elevator in it at an overall height of 45 feet. The height limitations allow for extensions of staircases and elevators for overrun. They don't compute that into the building height for the number I just mentioned. But we wanted to be clear that that's the number that we were looking for for this portion of the building, which is just that 18 feet wide, where the staircase is located. And then along the bottom, you'll see the dimensions going across to just kind of show how that piece that is out closest to the sidewalk and the step back itself is about 55 feet clear wide. So again, those dimensions are there for your sort of looking at, understanding. We can talk more about those as we go. We thought these were probably the most germane to some of the questions that we had heard for our team. And then we did hear that people were very interested in understanding how the site works with relationship to Columbia Avenue. And so I want to make sure that this is clear, that we have three drawings to share with you. And none of them is sort of a view like the fronts, but these are informational and intended to explain what our thought process has been in going through the design of the building and the delivery of a structure on the site. This diagram on Page 7 is really just a reflection of those heights, floor levels. The one additional element on this particular drawing on the left-hand side is that from the street level to the parking deck level, where the tires would sit, is 11 feet. So we're going sort of 11 feet below the sidewalk to, for our garage level. And just for reference, what you're seeing on the left-hand side there, the dashed line represents the line of the existing parking area that is currently behind the fire station. That's, once you kind of pass under the building, it's that exposed area. And those walls on that left-hand side are part of that structure that exists. The building on the far right is the co-op. It has a little wall at the back with a railing and some equipment on the backside. On the left-hand side of the drawing is a little bit of the Healy Building, shown above that wall. So it actually extends a little bit further down on the backside. In a flat elevation, something that we never really perceive, this just helps understand that our goal and mission here on the back of the building is, A, it is a back, but B, it also has a lot of opportunity to get a lot of light and air into the upper floor spaces, as well as the space that's at the main level. And we would look toward making sure that we can maximize that, get a lot of potential for light and air on the back, and treat it as a facade, not as the sort of blank back of the building. You'll note a couple of rectangles in the gray area underneath that level. That's actually at the parking level, and we're looking into ways that we can make sure there's proper ventilation, air, even light into the garage structure, so that it doesn't feel like it's completely enclosed and dark. The lines, the line along the bottom is the curb line, basically, of Columbia Avenue. It's turned and curved, but it essentially goes from about 50 feet below the sidewalk at the left-hand side, all the way up to about 15 or so feet below the sidewalk on the backside. We took another layer and placed it over this. The two green swaths on the next page represent basically what we see as the tree canopy that's in existence today, again, in elevation view. If you stand on the front side of Carroll Avenue and kind of look across the parking lot, you can see the tops of these trees. They're not quite as tall as the building will be, but you can actually see how those play out. And if you join us at the pop-up, you can kind of see how that plays out. That canopy is something that we're very interested in protecting as much as we can. We are looking at, with our civil engineers and other consultants on the team, how much of the ground plane we really need to affect in order to clean it up, to stabilize it, to make sure we're caring for stormwater, and really kind of making sure that the back is really seen as a green space. The darker green would be kind of understory or plantings along the grade moving up. The vertical elements you see at the bottom are actually representing the utility poles that run along Columbia Avenue, and their relative height, again, looking at this from a flat plane perspective. And then we took this work, which was done in our model, and dropped it into a Google image of the street, which resulted in this sort of photo montage, which is on Page 9. And the important thing to note here is that the photograph of the trees is really there just to say that, you know, there's a lot of green on this site right now. Actually, there was a lot of green on the site when this picture was taken. Currently, you know, it's thinned out a little bit because of the, of spring coming. It will probably be thinned out a little more along the ground plane, both for the health of everything that's on that site, as well as making sure that we're able to maintain and stabilize the grade. And then how the building sort of fits in to that view. This view is actually taken about 20 feet up the hill from where Poplar comes into Columbia. And again, it's intended to just kind of show the layering of things that we're concerned about. We're not trying to hide our building behind the trees, and we're not suggesting that you won't be able to see anything from it. But we are taking care to understand how those windows, when they're occupied, what the eventual conversation will be between one side of the street and the other. They point sort of down the hill instead of across the street directly. And we're going to continue. We want you guys to look at this and understand it and consider it in the context of where we are today, and help us as we move forward with real designs of that edge and how much of it needs to be permeable, how much of it needs to be shown, and how much we can actually in the future restore a canopy to that spot that's nice and thriving. So we wanted to leave you with those elements during the conversation this evening. Hopefully, we can reference those if you have specific questions about them. This is your work session, but we're here to answer any questions that might come up through the process. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I know a couple of folks had these questions, and it's been raised, and Mr. Kern, who had to leave, was, I think, one of the last public speakers tonight. But one of the things that people have discussed is the public realm area that we're calling it, and whether or not it would be possible or advisable to even do the setback, further back in that area. If you could speak to that.
Sure. I'm going to speak to it over Sheet Number 4, which is only the building and the curb face. It doesn't show the design of the open space. We're currently showing 40 feet in depth from that curb face to the wall of the building. And one of the things that we're wrestling with in terms of how far the building steps back is how visible a tenant can be at that point, from the sidewalk to the face of the building. Tenants thrive on being able to be visible, to be able to promote their storefront. And so we have to be very careful about how far we want to push something back from the curb. One thing that will be really helpful, I think, is when we do the pop-up, to understand where those lines actually are in space. It was surprising to some, I know, that the edge of the lay-by lane, for instance, is about where the split-rail fence is. And so I think those kinds of clues, moving forward, would really help people sort of understand how big some of those spaces are. We're certainly, and it continued to be, open and collaborative about how that space could best be utilized and functioned for the community, not just for the tenancy in the space. But we want to make sure that we're respecting the rules of how much communication happens between those spaces from the retailer's perspective. So for right now, we're continuing to show this 40-feet depth. The 55-foot width is just the building width, but as we go out to the curb, we have more width than that, up to about 70 feet of space for the dimension. So if you look at Slide 5, the note between the stairs, sorry, between the staircase and the next move forward of the building is 55 feet. That's basically the narrowest part of that public space. So we're looking at about 2,700 square feet or so of space to deal with in that. We would rather, I think, look at width instead of at depth in terms of maximizing that area, because I think the idea of a linear strategy is something that's more compatible with a streetscape, where we're trying to provide some of that public realm.
But you are open to discussing that?
Sure.
Just wanted to make sure, okay. And I don't, one other question that has come up a lot, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. And I don't know if it goes in this conversation, in building design and placement, or in a later one, but I raised this last week about the placement of the elevator. And if there were, it was anywhere we could look at possibly moving that closer to where the co-op side of the area.
Okay. Any of the planned views is fine to look at. I would say that the same holds true for the vertical circulation of the project. We're open to discussing that. It have been open to discussing that. We have reached out to our neighbors to talk about setting up a meeting where we would understand precisely some of the issues that we need to solve for, numbers of people, in addition to things like parking spaces and what those kinds of requirements are. We haven't yet been met back with that conversation to be set up. Right now, the technical aspects of the elevator is that we're required to have one, but that's just a requirement. We certainly understand the benefit of having two and having different ways in and out of the building, and would be open to discussing how that can happen. We definitely see from a design issue that this element at the corner near the ramp is something that we really want to try to make a memorable piece for the project. We do currently have a stair at both ends, and those are places where it's convenient to go up and down. And so the opportunity to think about moving or adding some of those pieces is certainly something that we should all talk about together. I think understanding the needs, understanding the sizes, et cetera, is something that we should all talk about.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for being here tonight, being with us at this hour. And maybe even thank you for being here tomorrow, too.
We can do it in an hour and four minutes.
All right, I just, again, you know, now we've had a chance to look through this, these plans for a little bit, and heard some of the feedback from the community. I just have a short list I'd like to run through. We don't need to spend a lot of time on it. You've already talked some about the elevator. It seems like the elevator is just, for functionality, is misplaced, because the co-op is obviously, would be much better served by the elevator being closer to the co-op. I know, design-wise, that's a little bit of a challenge for the tower that you have right now, but I'm confident that you can fit it in and make it look pretty, moving it back to the other end. And related to that, you know, we talk about the roof, and I know the green roof is always a nice environmental feature. But as we think about places for people to sit, I think about some of the places in Silver Spring where I see they have rooftop seating and even a wet bar on the roof with a restaurant below serving food on the, at the tables. I wonder if that might not be a better, a better design that would include more seating for people that wouldn't have to buy a drink or buy food, be a place for people to sit and congregate that gives more of the public space people are looking for. It's nice to have it some, at the street level, for the people just to stop as they pass. But if they, you know, want to stop and socialize for a while, it might be nice to have seating up there on the roof. Again, just food for thought. As I, one of the comments tonight raised a question about the trees along the street. The question was, you, I don't think you were here at the time. There was concern that with the underground parking extending out to the property line, that those trees wouldn't have sufficient dirt to grow in. And so it was concerned that your drawings are pretty, but may not be realistic. Again, I just bring that to your attention. I'm certainly not going to be able to judge yet tonight, and I'm not sure that you would be able to either. There was a question about the LEED certification with some disparaging view of the LEED gold, and wondering if we shouldn't be aiming for a higher target than that.
Just to note, I mean, all those questions really are also for next week, too. We really focus on the public space and the sustainability element. So I'm glad you mentioned them, but I just wanted to let you know that that's where we focused a lot of that information.
I appreciate that. At my age, you don't know if I'm going to make it till next week.
I think voting is closed on best comment.
Again, looking, you didn't have a drawing of the lower level tonight, but in looking at the plan from last, the last time you were here, it looked like some of those parking spaces were actually, would result in people double parking, that they're too car deep. I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right. And I take it from the bobbing head that that's true.
Yeah. I think it was for certain, you know, businesses could like stack cars, or that could be a storage area or something.
Okay, so that would be more like for the tenant staff to park.
That's right.
Okay. I'm concerned, and I, again, we heard it tonight, the space for trash, even for just the tenants in this building itself. It's hard for me to picture, having some experience with other facilities and the trash, it seems like it's underplanned. And I think that's it.
Okay.
I, again, some of those may not be the focus. It's a nice discussion, but there are things that I think do need to be answered. It's a nice discussion, but there are things that I think do need to be answered before we go to the next step.
Okay. I do think there are a couple of things I'd like to just point out, because I think they are germane to the design and placement topic. And those have to do with the third-floor idea or the rooftop space. I think months ago, we shared exactly your opinion of the usefulness of that space for something that could be event space, something that could be outdoor space, something that could be more publicly accessible. We made the decision to cut that from the program based on community feedback, essentially, and that we have focused more on that space being something that could be turned into that sustainability option. We do have a small space left over that we're using for amenity space for the tenants in the building at the corner nearest the stair tower, which we still think would be a great amenity for that, for that space. So we don't disagree, but I think we're now down to a two-story building with a sustainable roof.
That's probably not the only thing that I disagree with some of the public comments.
I also wanted to just briefly mention the trees. I think it'll come up again, but we do have those section drawings that show kind of where the garage sticks out. We are not actually pulling the garage all the way to the property line. So we do have space between the property line and that edge of the building to talk about soil depths, to talk about other techniques that are useful in ensuring that we can get things to actually grow and thrive. So we can talk more about that.
On the front of the building? You just said, on the front of the building?
Correct. Correct. Like this image is starting to show, that that's well in front of the space. And the other images, we're showing any trees beyond where that garage level would be. Still to be worked out, clearly, but that's where our ideas were coming from. I think most of the others will come up in the other sessions, but I've noted them, and maybe we can hit them before we even get to that point. Thank you.
Councilwoman Circe?
I thank you so much for bearing with us and for opening with your comments about the elevators. I know that was something that I brought up previously in a work session. So I do want to encourage in D.C. to think about adding an elevator, not necessarily trying to redesign the aesthetic of the glass tower. I think that that's a nice element, and I think it works well where it's currently placed. I'm thinking about the setback, like if you were to move an element like that closer to the co-op, I just don't think that would, that would work in terms of the amount of space that's available there. So I do think it makes sense to have the tower as an aesthetic where it is currently placed, but I think it makes sense to add a second elevator that is closer to the co-op, perhaps it is a little bit more, I've lived in urban places with urban grocery stores where the elevators are typically wider to allow for someone to have a cart. So you basically, you go in the elevator, it's wider, you can take your cart, you go downstairs, you unload your groceries, and there's a place for carts right near where the elevators are, and you just put it back there. So I would encourage thinking about something like that as a potential solution so that it doesn't compromise, you know, the aesthetic, but provides that added functionality that we all know people are going to need. And I think that's my main thing, because right now my brain isn't working. All right, thanks.
I'm going to say ditto to what Councilwoman Circe just said. She said it better than I did before. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you for staying with us this evening. I'm going to be quick. It's already after 11 o'clock. I do agree with my colleagues about adding a second elevator rather than trying to reposition the elevator at the tower. That design element works. It really helps pop for the project. I think the facade, I think, looks good. I think you guys got it right this time around. I know, on the parking, can you remind us how many spaces are going to be in this garage?
Right now, what we have in the design is 72 spaces.
72 spaces, okay. And if you do put another elevator in this project, would that take away from that 72? Or do you know offhand?
It may or may not. And the reason for that is, we currently are showing electrical rooms, mechanical rooms, et cetera. We know we have the vertical circulation with the stair. What we don't know is what we need for requirements for the grocer to use that space. Where do they store carts? Where does all of that happen? So if it did anything, it would reduce the number. But we think that we've, we have certainly built-in spaces to use for some of our mechanical equipment, et cetera. So I don't have an answer for you right now, but we would explore that and understand it. We don't want to lose parking, but we also want to make it work.
Okay, good. And I think the last thing, at least for this evening, is the seating out front. Have you guys done any, like, analysis to see if there's enough with the foliage that you're going to put, if that screening is going to help, like, dampen the noise on East West Highway, you know? I mean, so that it does have that element of you're enjoying a meal and it's not by a major thoroughfare?
Yeah. The, we have. We are separating ourselves and any outdoor seating and dining environment a pretty good distance away from any of the curb traffic, as well as from the lay-by lane, where seven feet plus a barrier that we're currently showing is bollards. We are talking about, if you look at the screen or on page three of your diagrams, the space between the bollards and the seven-foot lane could actually have other types of plantings in it and sound material. We want that to be a comfortable space, and we want people to understand that they could actually use the outdoor seating. They could also come indoors in most of these places. So we want to make sure that that's handled correctly.
Good transition, good.
Correct.
And then just, I lied, one more question. Burn Kelly talked about his sketches and his ideas. Have you guys looked at any of that?
We have, over time. And I think that, right now, we're working with our, we've brought on a landscape architect recently to look at the care of the spaces that are intended for the public, intended to be used for deliveries and all of that kind of stuff, and expect to continue to drive that through that professional discipline. I mean, this is something that really needs to be designed well.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Kostick?
Thank you. Thank you for coming and being here so late tonight. I want to echo what my colleagues have said regarding the elevator. I think it would be good to have an elevator on the side closest to the co-op. I also think, as a couple of people have said, that it would be good to retain the tower on the opposite side rather than putting it next to the co-op. I particularly like that the architecture of the building next to the co-op is set back a little bit. It looks more like brick. It kind of melds with the co-op a little bit, so I wouldn't want to see something that were akin to the glass on the other side. And I also think, I'm not sure if you would be considering making that elevator go up to the third floor, but I think it would probably be nice to keep it a little shorter on that side and maybe have the elevator just go to the second floor there or to the basement only, to the parking garage, just to keep that section a little more in line with the co-op and looking more architecturally like it fits there. So, building on that a little bit, related to the tower, I know that the owners of the Healy Building expressed some concern about their solar panels, and I think they had a chance to talk with you about that. I know you probably can't answer this now, but I just wanted to put that on your radar to think about a little bit in terms of the impact of the tower there on, potentially on their solar panels. And I'm not sure what the trajectory of the sun is there or what that is, but if you can take a look at that a little bit and consider what those impacts might be, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. We have heard that comment, and it's not a difficult study to manage, to determine how much of the shadow of that building would affect those elements. So we're looking forward to looking into that.
Thank you. And then I really appreciate the extensive number of drawings here showing the back of the building towards Columbia Avenue. I think it's helpful to get that view. I asked before, and I assume this is the case, but those windows from the parking garage would be high enough so that you wouldn't be getting lights coming out. Is that correct?
The, yeah. The team's looking at, basically from the inside, managing a height that prevents the lights from sort of pouring out, and is also cognizant of the relatively low ceiling height. So we want to kind of maximize that. We also want to make it, again, we're working with ventilation, light, air, et cetera, so we just, we want to continue to explore that. But it's a great suggestion to make sure that what's happening in that activity doesn't have a reverse effect and actually make it not contribute to the site, but actually make it a pain. So we're looking at that.
Yeah, and that's, that's my other question, is the impact of noise potentially from there on the backside? If you can kind of think about that a little bit and consider how that might be impacted, I think that will be important. I also wanted to ask, and I know this is getting a little bit into the nitty-gritty, but what are you thinking regarding lighting on the back of the building? Have you gotten into those discussions?
We haven't yet, but we don't have a particular activity on the backside of our building. And so, in a way, think that we're going to kind of be able to reduce a preponderance of sort of wall pack lighting, et cetera. We are working right now with Montgomery County and their fire department in terms of access for emergency, et cetera. So there probably will be things that are necessary and required, but we want to make sure that we're handling that in the right way. It's a good question, and we're just early on it.
And then, I'm not sure, well, let me ask one more question before I get into that. Is it correct, and I was just looking at the dimensions here, people have asked a little bit about how much of the, what is currently the wooded space, would remain wooded space? Is it correct that it looks like it's about 21 feet back into the wooded area from where it is currently with the parking lot? Does that?
So on page four, currently the wooded, or the, currently the parking lot extends from, well, it's kind of hard to show on this, there is a portion of our building that extends beyond where the existing parking lot is, yes. So we are coming further back. If you, actually, a good reference point is at that corner that you're noting where it says 21 feet. You can see the back corner of the co-op building. So we're just a bit beyond that, at that corner.
Okay.
So how does the, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just looking, I was actually looking at page.
The slope is, I think, the question?
Well, I was actually looking at page five, and there's, it says 21 feet from the, where that sort of bump-out happens in the back.
Yes.
So I was just wondering if the rest of that building was in line with where the parking lot is now, or maybe it's not.
Well, if you go to the corner of that parking lot and look across at the corner of the co-op building, that's basically the line of our building. But, yeah, there, it's essentially in that line going across. The gray does start to drop on the southeast corner because the parking lot isn't squared up like the, the current existing surface parking lot is not squared up like our building is. So we do come into that corner.
Okay. Then maybe that's a dimension we can get?
Okay. Or a line, or a line that shows where the existing.
And then, I have several questions regarding trash and deliveries that I won't get into now, but I was wondering regarding parking, is that something we want to get into tonight or is that scheduled for a future session?
Well, that kind of goes with some of the other stuff, but why don't you ask the question?
We can make notes of it.
Yeah, I just, kind of in general, I wanted to know, I know the co-op has, you've talked with the co-op about providing spots there, and I was just curious if you could talk a little bit about the capacity to work out an arrangement with the co-op to provide spots for their customers, as well as any option for validation of parking there?
Sure. All of those options have been vocalized by our team. We have yet to meet with the co-op directly to talk about those elements. We've reached out. So we're willing to talk about how that could work best and what those interests would be. It's a similar topic to the elevator question, to understand the need, so that we could potentially come to an agreement on how that could be used where it would be most effective.
And the other thing I would like to get on your radar is, if there are ways that you can incentivize, or the businesses can incentivize carpooling and biking, particularly for their staff members, I think that would be helpful. Or if there are ways that you can set up the garage so that there are carpooling spaces or there is more bike parking, things that can encourage people to use alternative modes of transportation, I think would be a really big benefit there.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman DiBala?
Yeah. I have a lot of questions, and most of them are not about design and appearance. I heard what a lot of people said, and oddly enough, looking at the front of the building and going back and looking at previous designs from this company and other company actually like this better. But what I think is maybe, you know, what I think alone is maybe not the point. I'm a little confused about some of the dimensions, and I also want to talk, and I don't know if this is tonight or if this is a bigger conversation, a little bit more about how we got to this point with massing and square footage. But let's just back up a second to, Casey asked about the dimensions of the back of the building. Tell me again, because I don't have it in front of me, where the parking garage is envisioned to, and is it flush with the back wall of the building or is it further?
Yes, it is, yes.
Okay, so that back design where it looks like they're stepped in a little, that's actually all? There's not, there's not, you're not implying that the parking comes out further?
No.
It's flat?
Correct, that's a flat wall going up.
Okay, I just wanted to get that straight.
And the lines that are shown on, for instance, page eight are opportunities to reflect sort of a shadow line, get a little bit more depth in there. But that heavier line that you're looking at on page eight is basically the floor level of the retail plane.
Oddly enough, I went out on Columbia and stood in that spot and a bunch of others that you pointed out here to see what, to try to imagine what it would look like. So that's very helpful. So I'm new, I'm new to this, obviously. And looking back in time, the design that you've proposed and the layout has shifted, and I'm sure for some very good reasons. And I'm wondering if you could just recap, because people come to me and they say, well, you know, what happened to the surface parking, or what happened to the alley in the middle, or what happened to the third floor? Is there a short answer to how you arrived at this design, or is that something that you'd rather tackle another night when we're all more fresh?
It's not easy to summarize, but it has been very thorough. I think that it's important to, I can answer maybe a couple of the questions that you've asked. I do want to make certain that, you know, we have gotten to this point through a very collaborative and collective process. But a couple of the things that we, that you mentioned, for instance, at one point we were talking about the corridor being in the center of the building. I don't think at any time we were really proposing to come all the way through the building or connect with the Columbia Avenue side. And that was one way to get to a central, kind of a lobby that would go up and distribute. We were also, at the same time, talking about a third floor. And so making sure that that was something that was away from the retail spaces at the front was occurring at that particular time. What it did in the end, though, was it really interrupted our flow from one end to the other of consistent quality retail space, which is something that we really wanted to make sure was something that we could do. We want this project to be successful. And so that interruption in the middle with all of the activities happening in it seemed like it was better suited at one end. Also, the connection to the existing location where the co-op receives its deliveries made that a wiser choice to move that service corridor to the edge. made that a wiser choice to move that service corridor to the edge.
Can I interrupt just for a second?
Sure.
Because one of the questions that I had kind of goes to that point, you have the building between, there's like, you said about a foot and a half space between the building and the Co-op.
Yeah.
But you had talked before about having a connection there so that the Co-op could get into the alleyway section.
Right. At that point, we would provide a connection point to a door on that side. That one foot six is-
Say that again slowly.
So, on, there's a, the two buildings don't actually touch.
Right. There's a 10-foot alley.
But it's, there's enough, the idea is that the Co-op can use that service alleyway section to go in and out with its loading, et cetera, to a point on the side of its building where it might wish to have it.
And while we're on the subject, so you have on page six, you show that alley as having a little cover, a canopy.
Correct. Just a portal.
A port.
So, right now, we're not showing it covered up above.
Say that again.
It's just a decorative gate, like.
It's a decorative gate. So, you're not talking about having that covered.
No. And just, I'd prefer to call that a corridor than an alley. I think that there's been, and just personally, there's been some confusion about whether we're driving down it. So, I just wanted to make it clear that this is for deliveries, hand trucks, pallet jacks, that kind of equipment that takes goods, takes them down a hallway and then distributes them to either side.
And is the, is, so we were, ditto on the elevators, by the way, and ditto on the notion of maybe going a little wider on the public space in the front. And along those lines, recognizing that you have a trade-off with square footage, of course, square footage and, and in other uses of space, have you thought about, could you think about the possibility of making that alley wider, excuse me, that corridor If that proves to be a real stumbling block for the tenants, future tenants and the neighbors in terms of hand trucks? I took a little walk through Old Town today and took a look at how different businesses approached this, and it was really interesting. So, I'm just putting that out there, recognizing that there would be a square footage impact to that, and then what would that look like for you? Is that something that you all could consider if that really is a stumbling block for tenants?
Much like you would, yeah, good question. Much like you would in any kind of a building, we want to minimize the space that we are not renting or that we're not using-
Yes, of course.
-for more than one purpose. Right now, we see the 10-foot dimension as something that is easily accessible. It works, there are district alleys that are nine feet from building, wall to building wall that actually vehicles drive down. So, we know that in the context of retail space and the deliveries that we've seen, this is a width that will work. We are trying hard to minimize any of those kinds of interruptions in our leasable space because the leasable space on Carroll Avenue is the most highly visible and will really sort of generate that activity. So, we haven't explored a wider dimension for that based on the fact that we think that we're at the, we've rightsized it.
And it also goes back to hearing a need, back to the conversation you were talking about before. Because then that would also have a visual impact as you're set further away from the building next to you.
Right.
So, that's why I feel like it's fair game tonight. And then, Sarah had given us some numbers about square footage and changes over time and from different, so I think, have you, we can do that some other time.
I was here, but I don't remember them off the top of my head.
Yeah, we'll do that tomorrow.
No, but that's, that is something that has-
Just part of that, sort of the history, the evolution of the project, just getting a clue for everybody.
And I think that the evolution of the project has also allowed us to understand, you know, when the, when the third floor was a part of the project or the second floor, when it moves and absorbs, when we are dealing with multiple users for similar space, all of those things tend to change. So-
Yeah, and for whatever it was worth, I also liked the roof garden idea a little bit. And there are other ways to allow for some partial community access to a green roof or green garden, but we might be getting ahead of ourselves on that one. Just put that out there. Thank you. I think that might be it for now.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thanks. I might be the last one, so I'll try to-
I've got some questions, two I'd like to-
Yeah.
Few questions and a few observations, but thank you, Colin, for staying so late. So, I'd say double ditto on the elevators. First of all, I think there has to be an elevator at the Co-op end of the building and maybe toward the back. I would defer to you guys on where that would be, but I really think that's essential. But then on the other, the tower, so-called where it is currently, so now that's, you can take the elevator all the way to the flat roof or do you have to walk up the last part?
Right now, we have it so that we would love to have the elevator be able to go all the way up because it helps us in terms of moving things and equipment, et cetera. So, that's what we're reflecting today.
But even-
It's not, it's not necessary to run that elevator up. The roof doesn't need to be accessed by an elevator, for instance. But for the sake of the amenitized portion for the tenants, it makes sense.
But either way, you would have, you would have the tower sticking up, in effect, one more story or flight or floor above whatever else you've got there, right?
As it's shown on page six, yes.
So, yeah, so on page six, I mean, I see how the main building and with the canopy runs across at the same height as the top of the Co-op. Over on this end, though, admittedly, you have the driveway in between there, but the Healy Surgeons Building is a little lower than the Co-op. And then, of course, you've got that tower there. So, is there anything in terms of that, I keep, that bigger difference in heights that design concern at all?
Well, one of the, one of the other elements is that the Healy Building, that drawing shows it as a flat elevation, as if it was in the same plane as our building. But if you look at page five, for instance, the front face of the Healy Building is actually at, at an angle, sort of stepping back. And so, it actually doesn't read quite that way.
Okay.
Which is basically why we sort of, when you look at the image on page three, you would normally be looking along the front of the Healy Building, but the road is curving and the building is stepped back. So, that's why it's not in the view on page three. So, we see it and perceive it a little differently than that elevation shows.
So, okay, thank you for that. So, you mentioned that the, kind of the official county height of this building would be measured at 3410, I think it was, which is basically just to the top of the second floor, but not including the parapet or the elevator and all of that, right?
Correct.
So, is there a maximum height at that site that you could go, like in terms of what it's zoned for currently or?
There are, there are a couple of things to take note of. Under the zoning for this particular site, I believe the number is 50 feet. But because this is in the, I'm going to get the name right, there's an overlay district that the county has that has a height of 30 feet with exception to 42 feet if you're doing a commercial structure. And so, that as a commercial building, it's under the 42-foot number. So-
So, do you have to apply for the 42 or that's an exception that's granted as long as it's up to 40?
It happens through the site plan process. My understanding is that it may need to be an ask and a give, but I need to let that fall with the site plan process.
So, now, one of the things that was mentioned in some of the public comments and that I've talked about previously is this question of outside seating versus outside dining. And I was under the impression, based on the previous presentation from, I guess it was from last week or maybe from talking to people at the open house, that although the one or two restaurants that you would have there would have the ability to have their windows opened, you wouldn't actually be contemplating people sitting outdoors eating. So, is that an accurate explanation of that?
Sure. I'm trying to get past the difference between outdoor seating and dining.
When you pay for and when you don't.
Gotcha.
Well, someone could walk by with their coffee and plunk themselves down on the bench or a planter.
Correct.
But there's no, there's no curbside service or anything like that. Is that accurate?
So, what we've attempted to do, and I think there's a whole bunch of different zones along the whole length of the project. If you look at the picture on page three, for instance, which I've got on the screen, that particular restaurant user, which is the one that has pulled back the 10 feet, what we were attempting to do was figure out a way that a restaurateur would be enticed by this location, have an operable open section, but in deference to the community space, make sure that there was a clear line that outdoor seating actually happens inside. You're just in, you're next to those doors.
And if it suddenly was raining sideways, you'd pull that right down, they wouldn't even have to move.
Pull that down. It's a very deep space. I don't think that it's a space challenge. And then, other types of furnishings around the area wouldn't preclude somebody from getting something to eat and going outside and eating it on a bench. But in that particular area, those benches are more for public use. They're not tables and chairs. They're not bistro-style seating. As we move up to the other end of the project, however, the space that we had labeled as a café, which is closest to the second staircase and toward the Co-op, would be the kind of space that has indoor seating, an operable window storefront, as well as across the public way, some tables and chairs that are outboard. So, there's the division between the walking path, outdoor seating, tables, chairs, foretops are able to fit in that space. We heard pretty loud and clear through the process that we, and I forget what the quote was, I might mangle it, but it was, you know, people shouldn't have to buy a cheeseburger in order to participate. And we're saying you could do both.
So, if you go to page, well, page four, I guess, four or five, you know, the area where the trash would get hauled and addressed and taken care of and so on, I think that's improved over where it was when we saw the presentation in the fall. But it's still really difficult for me to imagine that that would work with the trash here. And I'll tell you, there's a situation we're dealing with in Old Town where there's a parking area by where some residences are. And recently, to accommodate an outdoor seating there behind one of the local establishments, it led to the shifting in the location of a dumpster. And so, this is an ongoing discussion, but it's really close now to a residence. And we've gotten them to come more frequently to pick it up. There are several restaurants there. And it's just not tenable to, from my point of view and from the neighbors who live right near there anyway, to be that near a lot of garbage. And so, to me, although this is rationalized compared to where it was in the September, October presentation, it's just very difficult to imagine restaurants or other shops wanting to be operating there with garbage and trash out front. I just, I don't see that yet.
And we will talk more about that, but right now, a combination of things to eliminate and minimize that, that activity. Our trash won't be stored outside the building. It's actually stored inside the building. It's only taken out at the times, at the designated pickup times. And-
But if I could just interrupt for a second, but I mean, there's a lot of garbage, though, so it's not just like, oh, they bring it out and someone swoops in and picks it up, right? I mean, that's, that'll be a process, and that'll be right near where the people are sitting and so on.
And scale helps us with this kind of a project because we're talking about centrally managing that part of the activity, not having individual shop owners have to deal with where their particular dumpster or other-
So, who would be responsible? I mean-
We'd contract for someone to handle that.
Well, I mean, I guess to me, then, that gets, and several other people mention it, and certainly people who spoke in the public comment period mentioned it, the larger question of the amount of public space generally. And I mentioned this last fall and subsequently, and that was written into, you know, into our resolution, adequate public space at street level and accessible outdoor space devoted to year-round public use or enjoyment. I just don't think, to me, there's enough. And if there was more space, both public and otherwise, maybe this trash question could get addressed. And I will observe also, one of the other provisions in the, there was a reference to the trash and delivery in the resolution, but one of the other references was to, and I understand we'll get into more of this when we get to the traffic, but pending review of the state highway and county delay by may work. We add language to that effect. So, it seems like that's still out there. And at least one of the people who spoke in the comment period mentioned, who had done some of this kind of work, I think working with you guys at another project, maybe, that he didn't think that the county would approve it. I have no idea if that's true. But it just really makes me nervous that all of those things are still floating out there. And to me, we need more public space. So, you can answer, that was multiple observations. I'm not sure there's something to answer there, but that's where I sort of see us right now, is struggling. And I guess the last thing I would say is, in terms of more public space, obviously, there's a trade-off. Others up here mentioned it. If you get rid of retail space, that's fewer square feet for you to derive rent from, and then potentially that means that you either don't make as much money or have to raise rents. And nothing sort of works in isolation. But I also think that if the building becomes a really great draw and lots and lots of people want to hang out there and start hanging out there and it becomes this well-known place, they'll, they'll come even if they have a little less space and, you know, have to pay a few more dollars of rent and some of the same kind of small businesses we want to be there. So, I encourage you to think of it not as just a zero-sum thing of every square inch of public space is another square inch less of rental and think of it, that could actually make this into more of a draw that more people will go to, which will maybe help compensate for that. And I think that's where I will stop.
Okay. City manager Hudson?
I just, I guess, I wanted to make sure that, even though it's a late hour, that, just to point out again, that within the packet are the kind of focal points. And so, I really would like you to spend a little bit of time, you know, as either tonight or tomorrow, identifying, but particularly, you know, what are your issues related to, are you comfortable with the height of the building? Are you comfortable with the kind of facade look? A couple of people spoke to that, but I didn't hear a lot about that. Do you think that the, that the kind of design for storefronts is appropriate and the windows make sense to you? So, those are kinds of things that I do want you to make note of so that as we come towards assembling a resolution over time, we identify that, yes, we looked at these elements and this is the kind of thing that you're looking at. So, we had materials. I heard a couple of people mention some of the materials, but I guess I just want to, if somebody has a particular negative issue or concern about those things, this would be a good time to mention them. Maybe that's the way to end that.
That's it. Councilwoman DiBala, did you have another?
Yeah, I just, I just forgot when I, when we were talking about the parking, a couple of people mentioned, Casey, Councilmember Costeck, mentioned a bunch of concerns about the parking garage. Just, could you please add security? When you're thinking about the back windows, add that to the list. And then, I wanted to make sure we were going to get more information about how the back of the building interacts with the slope, where it ends relative to that. Because that's both a visual and also an environmental issue for me, at least.
And I think you were coming back with where the line is, that the slope starts now.
Yes. And that's a, that is a continually evolving topic as our team is currently looking at the stormwater management facility at the back, biofiltration, and where that actually happens. So, what will you see of that?
Yes, that's part of the lead discussion, yeah.
So, that grade gets a little manipulated based on what we hear back from other agencies that are going to approve or continue to look at the project through different lenses.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Well, what if I suggest to my colleagues that you take a look at the chart that the city manager was just talking about, and then we spend at the next work session, maybe the first 10 minutes, just kind of reviewing this chart that we have here to make sure there are no other building design and placement points. So, we'll take some time, and then the next time, we have the work session next week- So, we'll take some time, and then the next time, we have the work session next week, we'll take the first kind of like 10 minutes to review this. And I think the other thing that would be helpful for us, given that issues of the trash and recycling and pickup have been brought up, and I know you've described some of it, but would, just a short memo on like how this would work, back to us, I think, before we're actually scheduled to talk about it, would be helpful because I know members of the team have tried to describe this to me before, and I'm just having a hard time getting my head around particularly the trash and recycling. And so, it might be, if we have something written from you all, it may be easier for us to, to think about that, because it seems a little bit, there seems to be a lot of moving pieces on that.
I think we can accommodate that.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, we did do it before midnight. Thank you very much, and I just thank your team also. They were terrific on Saturday, and we're glad they're here, and-
Thank you.
Thank you, and more to come.